The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the second day of the 11th public hearing. I shall ask Commissioner Atkinson, Commissioner Mason, to give the acknowledgement of country today.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge the First Nations people as the original inhabitants of the lands on which this hearing is sitting. Ngana nga, chokorongo, kalyani arango, koari pa, chara, ninanja, choda, ngora, nganga. We recognise Mejin, Brisbane, ngana nga, ngora. Mejin nga, Brisbane ta. We recognise the country, north and south of the Brisbane River, as the home of the Cherubal and Jagorranations. Ngana nga, ngora, kanta, ngani, karo, panya, Brisbane river nga, alinjaro. Mono, olpara, arango, ngora, richa, choda, ninanja, mona, mono, koari. Ninani, Cherubal nga, mono, Jagorun nga. And we pay respect to the Gadigal people of the Eora nation. Their land is where the city of Sydney is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future, and especially elders, parents and young people with disability. I'd now like to read the First Nations content warning. This hearing will include evidence that may bring about different responses for people. It will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations people with disability. It will also include references to First Nations people who have passed away. If the evidence raises concerns for you, please contact the National Counselling and Referral Service on 1-800-421-468. You can also contact Lifeline on 131114, Beyond Blue on 1300-224-636, or, for First Nations viewers, your local Aboriginal medical services for social and emotional wellbeing support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Yes, Dr. Melifont.
Good morning, Chair. Ms. Crawford will be taking the first witness.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Crawford.
Thank you, Chair. This is the second of three days in which we will be hearing evidence regarding the Melanie case study. On Friday, we shall move to the case study of Win Marti. We again note that there is a non-publication order preventing publication of the names or information which will or is likely to reveal the identity of Melanie, her mother, her foster or former foster father and the victim of the manslaughter offence. The first witness today is Mr. Brett Holmes.
Good morning, Mr. Holmes. Thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. I understand you will take an affirmation. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, and she will give those instructions now. Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Ms. Crawford will now ask you some questions. And she is in our, she is in our Brisbane hearing room, just so that you can follow where everybody is. And Commissioner Atkinson is following this remotely. Commissioner Mason is in the Brisbane hearing room. Commissioner McEwan is with me in the city hearing.
Mr. Holmes, you provided a statement to the Commission dated the 18th of December 2020?
That's correct.
Is there anything in that statement that you wish to correct or amend?
No.
Chair, I ask to tender the statement of Mr. Holmes, which is at tab one of Tender Bundle B2. Ask for it to be tendered and marked as Exhibit 11.4.1.
Yes, that can be done. Thank you.
There are also attachments to Mr. Holmes' statement at tabs one through 47 of Tender Bundle D2. I ask to tender those attachments into evidence and for them to be marked as Exhibits 11.4.2 through to 11.4.48 respectively.
That too can be done.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Holmes, you're the General Secretary of the New South Wales Nurses and Midwives Association. That's correct, isn't it?
That is correct.
You've been in that position for some time, haven't you?
Since 2002.
And as I understand it, you're not aware specifically of the details relating to the treatment of Melanie?
That's correct.
But you do agree that you do have insights into the issues with nursing staff and systems of staff ratios and safety at the forensic hospital in New South Wales?
I do agree that.
Now, in your statement, you, you said that you were aware and did agree that the use of seclusion wasn't of therapeutic benefit to a patient?
That's correct.
But with respect to long-term seclusion, there are other considerations, you said?
That's right. It obviously should only be used in the extraordinary circumstances where there are no other options available to properly manage the patient.
Now, you are aware, aren't you, that there were some workplace health and safety concerns relating to Melanie being in long-term seclusion?
Yes, and those were identified, but they were not the focus of my interventions when I became involved around another male patient being held at the forensic hospital.
Is it true to say that one of the reasons why long-term seclusion was a treatment of choice within the forensic hospital was because there were issues within the nursing staff of their concerns for their own safety and for their ability to protect other patients?
Absolutely. That was raised with the association on quite a number of occasions. And the incidence of violence and injuries at the forensic hospital was very high. And the seriousness of some of those injuries were quite extreme.
When, when you talk about other incidents, are you talking about incidents within the women's unit at the hospital or within the men's units at the hospital?
There were incidents that I'm aware of in both. The details of those incidents in relation to Melanie, I'm not fully aware of.
But is it your understanding that it was within that unit culture where there had been aggressive incidents that the nursing staff were taking a very protective approach to their treatment and interactions with patients?
I have no doubt that the, the nurses took very seriously the, the issue around balancing their own safety and the care of their patients. And it's unfortunate that systems and practices were not in place or to allow the, the reduction in seclusion that was desired by both the Ministry of Health and people involved in the care of these patients.
So there, there was a high level policy direction about reducing the amount of time that patients would spend in seclusion within the forensic hospital?
Yes, and in the attachments that I've included, there were at least two independent inquiries about the use of seclusion. And I suppose those, the contents of those reports indicate that there were serious concerns about the use of seclusion and what were the causes and what were the solutions to that?
Now, the hospital itself had been a relatively recent new build.
That's right. 2008, opening 2009. It wasn't a new facility for New South Wales.
And your organisation was involved in some of the discussions around the, the environmental requirements for a forensic unit of that nature, weren't you?
We, we certainly were involved in relation to staffing, the initial staffing issues around that and discussions about the model of care, which was to reflect a similar model of care in other high-secure forensic units, both in Melbourne and in the UK. I'm not aware that we were directly involved in the health and safety sign-off on the build of the forensic hospital. It became clear after its occupation that the the process around the build had result, was a public-private partnership with the building being maintained and owned by a private organisation. And that, that identified a number of issues for our members where patients could access weapons by punching holes in walls, extracting the wooden battens, getting access to electrical cabling and using certainly the wooden battens on occasion as weapons.
And so is it your understanding that over the years, there have had to be modifications made to the building itself because of those safety concerns?
That's right. Numerous repairs have had to be made. And modifications were needed around issues like the glass that was to be used in units. Inadequate in the first build and we had to advocate on a number of occasions about trying to improve the safety of the actual environment by the introduction of higher-quality safety glass. The repairs to be done to doors which had been able to be taken off their hinges. And I understand, at least there was one occurrence where Melanie was being located that one of her doors was severely damaged during her care.
So in, with that background in mind, does that explain the issue of nursing staff perhaps being reluctant to have patients come out of seclusion without the necessary supports being given to them to manage those risk, risks that have been identified?
Yes, I believe that is true. Naturally, if nurses are concerned that they cannot maintain a safe place for themselves or other patients as a result of that patient in seclusion not being able to be properly contained, then they would be reticent to transition that patient out of seclusion. And particularly if there were going to be insufficient numbers of staff to be able to respond and if necessary, return the patient to seclusion. It's a, obviously a difficult position to be in. But ultimately, both the employer and the employees have a responsibility to maintain the safety of the workers who are trying to deliver the care as well as meet their professional obligations to the care of the patient.
When you say that the obligation to maintain the, the safety of the workers, would you agree with me that maintaining that obligation to the workers at the same time as supporting a patient's right to be treated in the least restrictive environment possible, that those two things are not contradictory? That it is possible to do both?
It is possible to do both if you have adequate resources of both an environment that's suitable and that you've got adequate numbers of appropriately trained staff with the high level of skills needed to manage a situation which is caring for a a high-risk of violence patient.
So is that a, a problem that arises with a lack of responsiveness within the organisation to have staff available in order to manage those risks because you don't know what you need in advance?
Well, the model that was set up at the forensic hospital relied on taking staff from other wards to respond to emergency situations. So every time there was an emergency, a minimum of one staff from each other ward at the hospital were part of the emergency response team. And if it then followed a second call, a second person from each of the wards would be taken to respond to that emergency situation. So that becomes very difficult when you do not have enough staff. And what we faced at the forensic hospital over many years was a constant situation of almost 30 full-time equivalent vacancies, which were then having to be replaced by casual agency or overtime. In fact, the situation became so bad that they put a cap, a maximum, on the amount of overtime that their regular staff were supposed to be able to do in any fortnight, capping that at 32 hours. But it became a situation, of course, where you also relying on people with relatively early skills in their nursing career. The forensic hospital recruited many new graduates to fill their vacancies. And over time, we saw a cycling of people through that system. We'd be told that there would be 30 full-time equivalents and they were recruiting. They'd then tell us, well, we've filled those or we're almost filled those. We've at least got it down to eight. But that was via using new graduates straight out of university. And if that in itself indicates a level of risk. Now, those people were obviously dedicated, new registered nurses who were interested in getting their experience and qualifications expanded by going to the forensic hospital. But if anyone has worked with forensic patients, they are the most complex people to look after. And of course, it was going into a high-risk environment, so it's not unusual that there would be a level of concern by staff about how they would be able to manage a situation where a person who had been violent, secluded, and then to be released from that seclusion, if they were not confident that they had the staff, either the numbers or those with the skills to be able to manage the situation when a patient is, that has been very violent, released from seclusion.
Mr. Holmes, could we just go back a step to provide context perhaps for some of your remarks? You've told us, I think, that the forensic hospital opened in 2009. Can you just give us a description, please, of the forensic hospital? That is, how many beds, who are the patients, or at least who were the patients at the beginning and whether that has changed over time?
So the forensic hospital is a 135-bed secure environment for both male and female adults and adolescents. And those people within the hospital include forensic patients that have committed serious violent offences but found not guilty of an offence by reason of mental illness or unfit to plead because of mental illness.
I wasn't so much thinking of you reading your statement. I wanted your overall assessment as to what the, the hospital, what was it intended to do in 2009, 2010? Because you have said that it's possible to do both things that Ms. Crawford put to you if there are, if there is a proper environment and numbers of appropriately trained staff. I'm just trying to get a feel for what the original idea was with this forensic hospital. I think we understand the overall character of patients, or at least the classification. But what, what was your understanding, being the, in the same position you are now, you were then? What was the idea of this hospital? How was it going to work?
It was to be a secure unit, mental health unit, that could manage the most dangerous and the most difficult patients with mental illness in the state. We had previously had forensic patients in a number of other secure units around the state. But the new forensic hospital was to be a new model of care where they would be contained in an environment which was trying to move away from a custodial environment to a therapeutic environment. It relied on nursing staff to provide both the therapeutic and the security response in the first instance to the care of those patients so that there were no correctional officers, there were no security guards inside the hospital, providing direct contact with patients.
Was the association comfortable with nurses performing the security role in addition to the caring role?
Well, we, we certainly had a number of concerns about that, but at the time of the opening, we certainly accepted that there were other models where that was working, both in the UK and in Victoria. As a, as a former mental health nurse, I had worked in areas where there were almost no security guards. In fact, the security for the hospital where I worked at Rosel was really perimeter security as well. So I had experienced looking after severely mentally ill patients. So I understood the concept of nurses delivering that acute response. I think over time, what we've seen is a range of changes that have occurred, both in the severity of the illness of the people that have been cared for and I suppose the make-up of the nursing staff that are caring for mentally ill patients.
What were the, what was the original objective, as you understood it, of the hospital so far as nursing staff was concerned in relation to their training? Was there any particular training that nurses were meant to have in order to come into this, as you're describing it, rather challenging and difficult environment?
Well, the expectation from us was that they would be recruiting experienced mental health nurses and that they would be recruiting experienced mental health nurses with a forensic background. So that there would be the transfer of skills from those people who had previously worked in forensic hospitals, either from the UK or elsewhere in Australia, to work with these patients. And that the use of mental nurses with mental health training would be a priority. The reality has turned out to be somewhat different, particularly with the need to use so many new graduates into the mental health facility.
All right. I'll get Ms. Crawford to resume, which I'm sure she's anxious to do, but just one more question. What is mental health training for nurses or to train mental health nurses?
Well, there's two cohorts, I suppose. I'm in the old cohort where we undertook an 18-month on-the-job psychiatric nursing certificate. And that ceased in about 1985 or 86. And since then, it's a postgraduate certificate, diploma, degree or master's degree that people can undertake. But there are many, many nurses working in mental health that do not have those qualifications now. We advocate strongly that anyone that's working in mental health should have the opportunity to undertake the highest level of education in mental health nursing that they can. But the reality is that many people start out on an experiential basis. And as I understand it, and I'm sure the management from the forensic hospital will give you more detail on the level of training that they provide to the new graduates when they arrive. But there's an orientation process and then they're placed on the ward. So they are learning a lot of the, the skills and experience of working with mental health patients in the most acute situation.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Crawford. Sorry to take so long.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Holmes, just to talk a little bit more about the inexperienced staff, are you aware of any additional supports that are put in place for them when they start at the forensic hospital, if they are new graduates?
Well, I'm told that they're given a significant orientation. They're, at the minimum, also must be provided with a training module for the prevention of violence. And they shouldn't practise before they have undertaken that particular level of training. That's about de-escalation and then, if necessary, managing a violent situation. So they are then provided on-the-job opportunity for expansion of their skills, as far as I know. But I have not examined the content of the orientation or of their education modules that they would have access to.
Are you aware, for example, if there's any period of time that they might be supernumerary on the ward? You said that once they've done the orientation and perhaps the behavioural management aspect of their training, that they're put on the ward. Are they put on the ward supernumerary or are they put on the ward with an expectation that they can perform the full function of a nurse within that environment?
I don't know whether they have a supernumerary period. I'm not aware of it.
All right. Are you aware of whether or not there's any additional support for the existing staff? If they are to take on a number of new If they are to, uh, take on a number of new graduate nurses? Uh, if they have any additional support about doing that?
Well, there are, uh, a number of roles, clinical nurse specialists, clinical nurse educators and nurse educators, uh, that, uh, are at the, uh, hospital. There are also some clinical nurse consultants. So there are a number of, um, high level, uh, categories of staff who have responsibilities for, uh, supporting staff, uh, supporting staff with additional, uh, education and, uh, with clinical guidance of them. Uh, I noticed that in at least one of the reports, it was identified that there was a paucity of clinical supervision, uh, of staff and, in the, uh, in the best possible world, anyone working in a forensic hospital should have, uh, access to clinical supervision, uh, so that they can regularly, review, uh, their practice, uh, in a safe environment with another clinical, uh, expert who is able to give them feedback and support and recommend development, uh, or change of practice.
Can you explain to the commissioners what the violence prevention and management training includes for forensic hospital nurses?
Well, essentially, it's, um, as far as I understand it, it's, uh, the same as the same, uh, module that's, uh, provided across the rest of the public health system. The full course is a four day course, uh, that involves, uh, both theory and practice on, uh, identifying, uh, escalating behaviours, techniques of de-escalation and then, um, how to participate in, uh, restraint, uh, and takedowns of, uh, patients where, uh, all of the attempts to de-escalate, um, have failed and a decision is made that the person, uh, requires restraint.
And is that what you were saying earlier when you were talking about the concerns that you have with the dual role that nurses have? With developing a therapeutic relationship with a patient while at the same time being responsible for the, the management of challenging behaviour which may well involve restraint?
That's right, um, and it's a frequent one that is experienced not only in the forensic hospital but across the mental health services. And I suppose the additional, um, part that's quite difficult is that, um, mental health patients, um, without complicating factors of personality disorders, uh, probably can, uh, come to, uh, some level of understanding that the, the nurse is trying to assist them. But the other roles that, uh, the nurses are expected to undertake, uh, at the forensic hospital include, physical searches, um, and activities that, um, some patients, particularly those with uh, some personality disorders see as, uh, very much a policing type approach. That makes it difficult for those nurses, um, when they're dealing with those particularly complex and difficult patients. To be able to go in and, um, uh, I suppose, uh, do these, uh, both personal searches and, uh, searches of their rooms and, uh, areas and have to act like a, uh, a police or corrective services officer in terms of that particular part of the role. So not only do they have to do restraint and they often have to, you know, as I said, they're coming from other wards. There'll be, um, the people on the ward uh, and then there's the people coming from other wards. So they're rushing into a patient they may or may not know, engaging in a restraint, um, if, uh, everything works as per the policy, engaging in, um, some review and post the event. But it's often the case that they're in this dichotomy of having to, um, act in a fairly, um, strong way and then try and re-engage, um, at some stage with that patient on a therapeutic basis and try and maintain that therapeutic trust relationship. And, um, at the same time, acknowledging that, um, any seclusion, any restraint is, uh, trauma for the patient and, uh, the nurse.
Would you agree with me though, that it's not a one size fits all approach in mental health nursing?
That's right, uh, and that's, you know, why it's a, a complex role that, um, mental health nurses play in terms of, um, trying to develop those relationships, but also then having to deal, uh, with, the behaviour that sometimes, uh, follows from, uh, a failure in those therapeutic relationships.
And would you agree with me also that perhaps having security staff in an acute mental health facility, whether it's a forensic facility or not, can be destabilising to the therapeutic environment as well?
Well, there's certainly, uh, arguments that that's, uh, the case. And as I said, my own experience was without security. What has changed, I suppose, is, um, what is the make up of our workforce in mental health? And are there people with sufficient, uh, capacity, body mass, strength, um, to be able to undertake, um, the, uh, security part of the role or the restraint, um, part of the role? And that is where, um, there is, um, a diversion or a, a, a difference of, uh, views between, uh, nurses themselves and of course between, uh, the, uh, the other allied health psychiatry, psychology staff about how the, uh, the particular model is best managed.
So leading on from that then, is that related to the aging workforce within mental health nursing and the difficulty of getting junior or nursing graduates into that area of work?
Yes, um, it is both, um, the aging and, uh, I suppose the balance of sexes as well, um, and capacity of people to be able to undertake, um, those roles. And in many circumstances, it's the, the techniques are designed so that uh, mass and strength should not be the primary, uh, choice, but, um, the response from our members, uh, uh, about some of the male patients is that, in order to be able to properly restrain or safely restrain someone's, you do need some level of, uh, strength, um, and mass to do that. Um, and obviously, um, that's, um, a view of our, a number of our members, where, uh, it may not be popular view, um, but if people who are restraining an arm can be thrown against a wall, um, because they simply cannot, manage the strength of the patient, then they are at risk.
And everyone else involved, everyone else involved in that intervention is also at risk.
That, that's right.
The person on the arm can't perform their part of the intervention.
That's right. It's, uh, um, and unless you've been in one of these situations of, uh, trying to restrain, then it's, sometimes hard to imagine how, uh, difficult it is uh, to do everything as per, uh, the book. Um, and it requires, uh, frequent training, frequent updates, practice, of, uh, the techniques in order to make sure that, um, any invention is done smoothly and safely.
Now, you, you said a little while ago that your own background was one of mental health nursing. Would, would you agree with me that in mental health, the general focus is on stabilisation and recovery for patients?
Yes, um, it is about facilitating people, uh, to recover, uh, and of course to, uh, resume a normal life as much as possible. The forensic hospital is of course one of those, um, challenging areas where, uh, the balance of, um, trying to get them, uh, mentally well enough to be able to, uh, return to a less restrictive environment or indeed the community, is, uh, I suppose complicated by, uh, the history of the patient and whether the, um, medication and other treatments are, are capable of, uh, assisting that patient's recovery.
And agree with me or disagree that that's not the same model that would be applied to patients with an intellectual disability and complex trauma history? The model that you would, sorry, the model that you would employ with those individuals, people who have an intellectual disability or complex trauma history with personality vulnerabilities is really about positive behaviour support and skill building?
Yes, um, the complicating factor is that, um, there are often people um, with a disability who's, uh, who's part of their disability has also a, a mental health component. So they're a complex patients. And it's, um, very unfortunate that there are a number of those, uh, people who end up in the forensic hospital. And that, um, model is difficult, um, to always manage, um, in the same way.
And is it also fair to say that the group of people from whom you may be able to recruit your experienced staff who have those skills is a small group?
Yes, um, we do have a shortage of mental health nurses in New South Wales. There is, um, in my opinion, inadequate attempts to promote, uh, the profession of, uh, mental health nursing. But at the same time, um, as a father of a nurse, um, I would have my heart in my chest if she said that she was going into the forensic hospital, to do her nursing, as competent as she may be, um, unless it's, uh, you know, and I can only assume things have improved since the change of management, a change of leadership at the hospital. But from what I saw in the period, uh, from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, the forensic hospital is a very difficult place to work and has, uh, a high level of risk. And that, uh, unless that's addressed with appropriate staffing, better skills, and that that's, uh, there's a lot more consistent support for that, um, then it's an area where people will go and have a look at possibly. Some will like it and stay because of, uh, the environment or the benefits that they may see from working in that area, but it's a very difficult, uh, place to, um, recruit to. And one of the other cultures that seem to be there that, um, I came across, which really shocked me was that there's, an understanding or there's an expectation that if you work in forensic help, that you should expect to be, uh, injured. That is part on parcel of being a mental health nurse in forensic healthcare. And that's where, I suppose, the so- the association certainly holds a different view, where we, uh, hold strong that, um, any area of nursing should be safe to undertake and that you should expect to be able to go home without being the subject of, uh, severe violence or injury.
And does that lead on then to the issue that you raised in your statement around enforceable staffing ratios? Is, is that related to that within the forensic hospital structure?
Well, there, there are, as, as we've said, there's no, uh, enforceable ratios at the forensic hospital. The forensic hospital was, uh, sidelined, uh, during the discussions in two thousand and eleven when we last were able to negotiate, uh, staffing levels in the New South Wales Public Health System. It was put aside as being, uh, special, unique and different and that it, uh, shouldn't be considered as part of those negotiations. So we, um, we have no capacity to enforce a ratio, um, of any kind. We therefore have to rely on management's, uh, decisions and the influence that we can have, uh, industrially and through their obligations under work, health and safety legislation.
Is that a calculation that's based on a formula related to patient numbers and identified clinical acuity within the unit?
In other mental health units where we have, uh, ratios, it, it is based upon, uh, the numbers of patients. So, um, we do not have a perfect system that then adds, uh, acuity on top of that as part of the enforceable arrangements. The acuity component is the responsibility of local management to determine and therefore add in addition to those, uh, nursing hours per patient day or ratios that we have in other mental health units. But at the forensic unit, um, it's, uh, entirely, um, at management's, uh, behest, uh, as to their staffing levels. We engaged with, uh, the forensic hospital as it set up, but as per my, our statement, those arrangements that we, uh, first agreed were changed when the introduction of a twelve hour roster component was placed, uh, as part of that staffing. Um, and we've never been able to go back and engage in, uh, a determinative discussion about what the ratios of staff should be at the forensic hospital.
With respect to the use of seclusion and the, the risk management approach that you take to bringing people out of seclusion, um, would you agree with me that there, there is always going to be a component of risk when dealing with the types of individuals that are placed within the forensic hospital?
Yes, and work, health and safety legislation says that you must do everything you can to minimise that, uh, risk. So that, um, you should be taking the, uh, both the, uh, needs of the patient and the safety of the staff into consideration. You'd have to put the safety of the staff as a high priority. And that means that, um, you need systems or processes or, um, ensure that there are adequate numbers of staff. available to respond to the unexpected when that patient is taken out of seclusion, particularly if there is concern that that patient hasn't regained their control or that they are a patient who has demonstrated in the past that they are unpredictable in terms of their response when they exit seclusion.
So we've heard descriptions of therapeutic risk-taking because when you have patients who are receiving treatment and developing skills to assist them with their own regulation, that you do have to be prepared to take risks with their therapeutic progress. But would you say that it's still necessary though to ensure that you have the relevant staffing availability to protect not only the patient themselves from the risk of dysregulation, but also to protect other patients and staff from those risks that you are prepared to take?
Absolutely, and that often means that if you're going to undertake that level of risk that you've done your risk assessment of that and that you have then put in place all of the controls that you can to minimise that risk. And clearly in this circumstance, that means that you have staff available who are able to respond to the identified risks. And in identifying the risks, you've got to identify whether there is unpredictability about this particular patient.
And that would involve having staff involved in that planning process, but also staff with the relevant skills and experience with the patient involved in that process?
Yes, so there needs to be a clinical plan and there needs to be a work, health and safety plan. And they should be created so that all of the people involved are aware of both plans and involved in the development of those plans. So that all of the risks are covered, that can be, and that the experience for the patient is a smooth one and not the subject of some chaotic response when the unexpected happens.
Now, you talked about agency staff and graduate nurses and the lack of experienced skilled staff within the forensic hospital specifically. But is there a use of other unskilled staff within the unit?
Not that I'm aware of. There was a suggestion that they would bring in a number of lesser skilled staff during one of our discussions about the acute shortage. My last understanding was that that did not proceed. But I haven't had not, I haven't been updated for 12 months about a lot of the things that have happened at the forensic hospital. I'm hoping that the fact that we have had a reduction in the contact with our members at the forensic hospital that it means that things have improved in that period. Or the worst alternative is that those people that were previously willing to speak up are now no longer there or not willing to speak up.
Are you aware that there are issues around transitioning patients out of the forensic hospital? When they are perhaps clinically ready to be transferred, that there are some issues finding a place for them?
I'm not specifically aware of that, but I'm not at all surprised by that. Our experience in the wider disability area is that, of course, we've seen the reduction in the numbers of residents in large residential. And what we've seen is that as the guaranteed two-year period ends, the NGOs get rid of the registered nurses and then rely on disability support workers. So if you've got complex patients, complex residents with disability and mental health and a history of violence, then it's a fairly unique situation. And given that the NGOs ultimately don't want to fund highly qualified nurses, I think there is, you know, an ongoing problem in being able to transition a number of patients out of the forensic hospital and other disability services.
And you may be able to comment on this, but there is also a difficulty getting patients transferred into the forensic hospital from custodial settings because the forensic hospital has too few beds available for the demand that's placed upon it.
That is understandable. The flow in and out is obviously a major problem there. That's a resourcing issue and a decision, I suppose, taken by government about how much resources they wish to put into forensic mental health and what services. In the wider system, we face difficulties across our mental health services of accessing mental health intensive care units and where those mental health intensive care units cannot contain or manage their most violent patients. The original expectation would have been that the forensic hospital would be a backup to that. But that's, you know, rarely available to be used because of the issue you raised about the inadequacy of the number of beds available.
All right, and when you mentioned a moment ago about not having much information from 2020 because you hadn't been getting out to the hospital much, was that because of the COVID restrictions?
Yes, we certainly only made visits into health facilities where there was a serious work, health and safety reason to do so. Other contact was then by phone and video conferencing as we were concerned about possibly being a vector of carrying COVID into workplaces. And my organisation also has a very high level of respect for work, health and safety.
And just looking at the situation in the forensic hospital for female patients, for adult women, there's only one of the units there that caters to adult women, that's right, isn't it?
That's my understanding and the mixing of acutely unwell with rehabilitating women is very complicated. And then I think there's an issue around adolescents being involved as well. So in talking to my officers who have been much closer to this and what we've identified in my statement is that that's a problem. And that's a resourcing problem that should be addressed. If you're adding someone who's acutely unwell into an area where you've tried to get people well and but they're at risk of being agitated, then patients will often spring off each other and get agitated with each other because they're in a confined space. And it's not hard to imagine how difficult it is if someone has acute symptoms of mental illness and that can be quite irritating to other people who are capable of being easily aroused or agitated.
And that would be especially so for patients with intellectual disability or other personality vulnerabilities in that small space.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr Holmes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Holmes. I'll ask the commissioners whether they have any questions, commencing with Commissioner Mason in Brisbane.
Thank you, Chair. I did have a question and thank you for your evidence today. I wanted to know about the adolescent forensic unit and if there's a different way of providing nursing and support to those in that area and that it may be different to the way that those in the areas where men and women are in those forensic units. Is there a different model because of them being adolescent? And in terms of the things that you've discussed and described this morning, understanding their age and the potential for change?
I would not regard myself as being well enough informed about the model of the adolescent model of care that they're using to be able to give you the answer. My main concern would be the mixing of adolescents with adults and the challenging issue around mixing adolescents who are very vulnerable and the challenge of nurses trying to separate vulnerable adolescents from other patients who might be quite assertive or aggressive and particularly around the issue of sex. That I can't imagine how challenging that is for our members on a daily basis.
And so I've made the assumption that adolescents would be confined in separate areas and not necessarily mixing and moving with adults, men and women. So what you're saying is that there is that movement?
My understanding, and I would be happy to be corrected, is that there are some adolescent mixing in the female area. Apart from that, I'm not familiar enough to be able to give evidence on that.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Atkinson.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner McKeehan?
No, thank you.
Do you happen to know the number of your members since the opening of the forensic hospital that have been injured in the course of duty as the result of interaction with patients?
No, I don't have a number in front of me, Commissioner, that I could give you. The number is extraordinarily high from our experience and it's the case that we don't always get notified as well unless the nurse or one of their colleagues notifies us. Then we may not find out about it in my statement. You know, there were incidences where we were informed by other organisers from other unions. So sometimes it comes to you and sometimes it doesn't. We don't always have branch officials or contacts on duty when things occur.
No, I understand that. I've seen in your statement references to particular cases where nurses were in fact injured in the course of their work. Are all nurses employed or engaged at the forensic hospital, members of your association?
No, we have a fairly high density. But I would say that there's a cohort who don't agree with us and don't join the union. But we certainly have a density of significant numbers, more than 200.
Out of a staff of what?
I'd be guessing at the total staff off the top of my head, Commissioner.
I don't want you to guess. Does the association have any position on the forensic hospital employing non-m nursing security personnel to deal with especially dangerous situations?
The position of the local branch was that it did support the introduction of security staff, particularly for those patients that were very violent. That resolution from the members dates back now a couple of years. So that if there were opportunities to have those discussions again, then we'd certainly be consulting with our members about that. I have heard that the response from some nurses is that they wouldn't want to work there if there was security. The ballot that was taken and that's set out in one of the attachments was that there was an overwhelming vote of our members in favour of the introduction of security staff at the time of dealing with a particular issue that seemed to go on for a long period with one of the male patients.
And what was the response of the hospital?
Well, the response seemed to say, yes, they'd investigated and then they walked back from that. And as far as I'm aware, it never progressed. And I think they thought they had enough of the nursing staff who disagreed with the idea of security. So there was a split and splitting of staff around that issue.
Thank you, Mr Holmes. I'll ask now whether any party representative of the hearing wishes to ask Mr Holmes any question. I'll start perhaps with Ms Furness. Is there anything that you wish to ask?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other party councillor or legal representative who wishes to ask Mr Holmes any questions?
Oh, thank you, Chair.
If not, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Holmes, for giving evidence. I think the evidence has indicated some of the complexity of the issues that arise that we're looking at over the course of this hearing. So we thank you for your statement and for the helpful evidence you have given today. Thank you. Shall we now take an adjournment?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I can advise that the next two witnesses are Ms Sears and Mr Davis and they have arrived in Sydney, but perhaps a 20-minute adjournment and resume at 11 o'clock?
Thank you. We'll resume at 11 o'clock Queensland time, noon in the other eastern states. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
Thank you. Yes, Ms Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. The next witnesses are Helen Sears and Todd Davis, who will give their evidence as a panel. The statement and annexes for Ms Sears' statement are at tab 2, tender bundle B2. And I ask to tender this document into evidence and for it to be marked as exhibit 11.5.1.
Yes, that can be done.
You will find a copy of Todd's, Mr Davis's, statement at tab 2. You will find a copy of Todd's, Mr. Davis's, statement at tab three of tender bundle B2. And I ask to tender this document into evidence and for it to be marked as exhibit 11.6.1.
That also can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Well, if Ms. Sears and Mr. Davis, thank you very much for coming to give evidence this morning. Just to explain where we are, you've heard Ms. Crawford, who is in the Brisbane hearing room, and you can see her on the screen. She is in the Brisbane hearing room together with Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Atkinson, whom you can also see on the screen, is appearing remotely. Commissioner McEwan is in the Sydney hearing room with me. If you would be good enough to listen to the instructions of my associate, she will administer the affirmation or oath as the case must be. Thank you.
Do you swear by almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Sears.
Mr. Davis? I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Now, Ms. Crawford will ask you some questions.
Thank you. Ms. Sears, your statement was signed on the 14th of January 2021. Is there anything, anything in that statement that you wish to amend or correct?
There were a couple of minor matters. I don't think I have the copy I made the amendments on with me. But where I spoke about my term of office with the New South Wales Council for Intellectual Disability, it says I was on the Board of Directors between 1997 and 2001 and chairperson between 1997 and 2001. I was chairperson between 1998 and 2001.
And that's a paragraph nine.
We're all wondering about that, Ms. Sears.
I believe there was another minor amendment. It might have been a word that I'd left out, but nothing of any substance.
Leave that till later. You can tell us about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And equally, Mr. Davis, your statement stated the 15th of January 2021?
Yes.
Is there anything in that statement that you would like to add or amend?
No.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Sears, you've actually worked directly with Melanie?
Yes, I have.
Can you tell the commission in what capacity you worked with Melanie and for how long?
I worked with Melanie as both a solicitor and for a time as a lay advocate. I first advised her in 2013 when she was being interviewed by police. I advised her in the capacity of solicitor. I then started to represent her regularly as a legal, as her solicitor from 2016 to the present time. I did do some social advocacy on and off when working as a lay advocate with legal aid. And that would have been on and off between 2013 and 2016.
And when you say from 2016 that you've represented Melanie, is that with her MHRT hearings, the Mental Health Review Tribunal hearings?
Yes, with the Mental Health Review Tribunal hearings, with all of them since 2016. And I have also represented her before the Guardianship Tribunal on, I believe, two occasions.
And Mr. Davis, can you tell the commissioners what your involvement has been or what your knowledge is of Melanie?
So prior to Helen's involvement in relation to representing Melanie, I represented her on a number of occasions from around about 2014 onwards. I've also been in the position of managing that team of solicitors who provide that representation, which Helen is part of.
Now, with Melanie's transfer from a custodial setting to the forensic hospital, perhaps starting with you, Mr. Davis, do you have any insights into how that transition was affected?
So that was consequence to section 53 of the Mental Health Forensic Provisions Act. That's in the last six months of her limiting term. Her status as a forensic patient ended and she changed over to a civil patient. That maybe have gone a step ahead. My understanding is, first of all, she was transferred from a correctional facility to the forensic hospital as a forensic patient under her limiting term. During that period of time or near the end of that limiting term, her status was under section 53 changed from a forensic patient to a civil patient.
And it's correct, isn't it, that at that time there was no legislative provision for an extension to Melanie's limiting term?
Correct.
But there has subsequently been an amendment permitting extensions to limiting terms in New South Wales?
Yes, since December 2013, Schedule One was added to the Mental Health Forensic Provisions Act. The term is extending a person's forensic status.
I wonder if you'd mind, for those who are following this, who may be in the fortunate position of not having legal qualifications, of just explaining a couple of the terms that you'll use, like limiting term?
So a limiting term is the equivalent of a sentence, and it's imposed when a person has been found unfit to be tried. They have a special hearing. They don't have the opportunity to plead guilty or not guilty. The special hearing is conducted on the presumption that they're pleading not guilty. And if they have been found on the limited evidence available to have committed those offences, then it's open to court to impose a limiting term. The difference between a limiting term and a sentence is that there's no non-parole period in relation to a limiting term. That's balanced out by the the act allowing for a person to be discharged or being released from their status as a forensic patient if they've spent sufficient time in custody and they're no longer an unacceptable risk to the community.
Right. And you referred to Melanie's change of status pursuant to section 53 of the Mental Health Forensic Provisions Act. That uses the expression involuntary patient. Could you just explain to us what that meant?
So an involuntary patient is a person who is deemed to be a mentally ill person, as defined under, I think it's section 14 of the Mental Health Act. And that's a person who shows symptoms such as hallucinations, delusions, serious disorder of order of thought, form, or severe disturbance of mood. Because of one or more of those symptoms, they pose a risk of serious harm to either themselves or others. And there's no less restricted form of care than the form of care that's imposed, which is detention.
Someone can become an involuntary patient without ever having a common direct contact with the criminal justice system?
Correct. And I can add that the majority of people are captured by that definition. And they've never come across, they've never intersected with the criminal justice system.
Thank you for that very clear explanation. Yes, Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Davis, since the legislative amendment permitting extensions to limiting terms, can you hypothesize whether or not Melanie's case might have been captured by an extension to her limiting term had that amendment been able to be applicable to her situation?
I would assume it would be, from the knowledge I've gotten, how the legislation's moved.
So what is the test for an extension to the limiting term?
So a person has to pose an unacceptable risk to the community. There's a two-tiered test, and there's no alternative for them to be a forensic patient. So it's like, but for them being a forensic patient, they would pose an unacceptable risk to the community.
With the extension to the limiting term, is it correct to say that that then involves the patient being held in a correctional facility and not transferred to a mental health facility?
No, it's not.
Okay. Can you explain that to the commission?
So when an extension order is made, it means that the person's forensic status continues. The court makes that order, the Supreme Court, but they have no control over the person's liberty or autonomy. What happens is that the Mental Health Review Tribunal, they continue with their powers and their control of the patient. So.
As a forensic patient?
Correct. However, the MHRT does have wide powers. They can detain a person in a mental health facility, a correctional facility, or other place, such as an aged care facility, if it's a locked facility. Or they can, or the person can be released to the community subject to conditions which are determined by the MHRT.
Now, coming back to Melanie specifically, she was transferred to the forensic hospital at the end of her limiting term in 2012?
That's my understanding.
And Ms. Sears, is it fair to say that Ms. Melanie's problems started much, much before that, that she had longstanding issues since she was a child?
Absolutely. In fact, since she was born.
Can you explain to the commission what you know of her personal history?
Yes, yes, I can. Melanie was born in a public hospital. She had an APGA score of two and was in intensive care for a week. Now, an APGA score is a score that's given in hospital to newborn babies. And it's to do with their condition. And it can also reflect loss of oxygen during the birthing process. I took the trouble when I was representing, first started representing Melanie to do some research. And I actually spoke to a family friend who is who is a midwife and who runs a baby and a maternity unit in a hospital. And she confirmed that an APGA of two is very serious, could quite possibly indicate brain damage, and that, at least today, that would lead to a referral to a paediatrician and follow up with a social worker. I have no way of knowing whether any of that happened. But it would appear from her subsequent history that there was little, if any, follow-up of Melanie and her mother after her birth. Now, the next sort of milestone in her in her childhood was when she was taken to hospital with a broken elbow and a number of other older injuries were found. When Melanie was five years old, she was found to have chlamydia of the throat, which indicates some fairly severe sexual interfere and sexual abuse. She was then removed from her mother. In spite of the fact that it was considered that her mother and her mother's friends had abused Melanie both physically and sexually, her mother continued to be given access to Melanie. And indeed, Melanie reported two sexual assaults by her mother when she was given access to Melanie while she was, while Melanie was being cared for in a children's institution. Melanie had a period of time in two different children's institutions. The first one, Lark Hill, was an institution for children who were basically at that stage in transition between being taken into care and being returned to the community. It's not known from any of the information on the file or anything I could glean from searches whether the institution at Lark Hill was one with any expertise in caring for children with disability. It seems to be an institution that was there to care for children who were wards of the state. It closed down one year after Melanie was admitted. She was then moved to an institution called Renwick at Mitogon. At that institution, Melanie was given access, or her mother was given access to her, and she was further abused by her mother.
All right. Can I, can I just stop you there just for a second? Just to short circuit some of this, would you agree with me that there were many opportunities in Melanie's childhood before she found herself in the juvenile detention centre where she was not only known to be a child in need of protection, but where the system actually did fail her when she was a child by failing to recognise that she was a child with intellectual disability and other needs that were not being addressed?
That's right.
Don't be inhibited from giving us some more details of that.
Thank you, Mr. Sackville. Yes. Melanie did report.
Please, if we don't mind, Ms. Sears, I think wants to add something.
Melanie did report that at Renwick, she was punished by being locked up in cupboards and that she was over-medicated. And I think the knowledge, it was well known, it's on her records, that she had been placed in, basically in seclusion. And she said, locked in cupboards. And yet a decision was still made later in jail and at the forensic hospital to place Melanie in seclusion.
So moving forward to the transition from the jail to the forensic hospital, she wasn't immediately placed in seclusion when she was transferred. Is that correct?
Yes, she was initially in the women's ward. And I might add that there is only one ward for women at the forensic hospital.
And do you know how many beds are in that ward?
I think there are about 18. And the unit is divided into two sections, an acute section and a subacute section.
But somewhere between 2013 and 2014, Melanie was moved permanently really into long-term seclusion, wasn't she?
She was initially in a seclusion room in the Kilevelli unit, which is a much smaller unit than the one she was eventually moved into permanently. And I did interview her in that room and can describe it if needed.
Would you describe that for the benefit of the commissioners? And when, can you say when that was as well?
Yes, it was 2013. I don't have the date with me, but could supply us if the commission needed it as a later date. It was when Melanie was to be interviewed by police about an assault on staff. I was asked, I was there at the hospital, I was asked to go and provide it with legal advice. It was a much smaller room than she was later secluded in. I could only see one room at a time. I could only see one room at the time, not two. Melanie, we were told, had to be prepared to be interviewed. While the nursing staff were doing that, a psychiatric registrar, Dr Caroline Stoney, gave the police officer, a social worker and myself a history of, of, of Melanie's earlier background and explained her, her disabilities to us. Melanie at that stage was dressed in a safety smock. She had a big lump on her forehead. There was blood on the, on her forehead, which seemed like fresh blood. There was dried blood down the front of her smock. And her, her room was bare. There was a, a, a sort of sofa without a back or ottoman that was long. It's a little bit longer than this table, maybe a little more narrow, that was covered in a brown vinyl. The thing that stood out to me the most about that room is that Melanie had graffitied the room with her own blood. The smell of dried blood mixed with dried body odor and the sight of that graffiti is something that will be with me until the day that I die.
And Miss Sears, that was the first time that you met Melanie, is that right?
That's right. That was the first time I met Melanie.
And that was also, you, you said in your evidence a moment ago that you and the social worker and the police officer were kept outside while staff were preparing Melanie for the interview?
That's right. She had to be held in holds when we were inside the room. So there was a nurse on either side. And Melanie, when she was in holds, had to have her hands like this and the nurses would thread their arms through her arms.
So when she was in that position, were you able to give her any advice? Was she in a fit state to receive advice from you?
She was quite calm. She didn't say much. My advice was basically not to make a statement. She was able to indicate by nodding her head that she understood me. She declined to make a statement. And then I asked her if she wanted me to organise either legal aid or the Aboriginal Legal Service to provide representation for her if the matter went to court. And she said yes.
Now, you said that she was in a safety smock. Is that a hospital gown or is it something else?
I'm not entirely sure. She was wearing a smock. I could assume that it was a safety smock. It was a fawn colour. If it was a safety smock, it would be of a sturdy material that she would not be able to, to tear and use to, to self-harm with.
And when you met with Melanie on that day, you say that the registrar spoke to you to prepare you for the interview. Were you given an explanation about why Melanie was in seclusion and in a seclusion or in a safety smock?
Yes, I was told that they, it was because she was a risk of harm to others and to herself.
Now, you both say in your statements that you're aware that Melanie stayed in long-term seclusion for many years, seven or eight years, it seems. Well, at least seven years. Now, with respect to the safety smock, can you say whether or not that was something that you routinely saw her wear? And if so, for how long did that continue?
Difficult to, to bring my mind back to it. Quite possibly the first couple of times that I represented Melanie, I may have seen her in a safety smock when I visited her before hearings to take her instructions. She was usually allowed to wear ordinary clothes to her tribunal hearings. That is a requirement of the Mental Health Act. And there was a time, I, I have my result notes from all of my times I've represented her. And I did make a note of when she was allowed to start wearing her own clothes again. I could give you roughly that time if that's helpful.
That would be helpful.
All right.
While you're doing that, Mr Davis, is it your understanding that when Melanie was transferred to the forensic hospital, she was transferred for treatment, but she was also transferred with an aim that supports in the community would be arranged for her within a short period of time?
I've got a particular memory, no, but it is something that I've drawn from reflecting on the documents that we've got in our file and so forth.
And with respect to community supports, were you aware of any particular inquiries that were made about Melanie in the early days of the transfer to the forensic hospital?
No.
Miss Sears?
Yes. At the hearing of the twenty-seventh of July twenty seventeen, I have a note that the tribunal was told, Miss Melanie is now permitted to wear her own clothes.
And so up until that time, you would infer that she wasn't allowed to wear her own clothes?
That's correct.
Now, there, there are also notes about Melanie being held in a prone position in order for staff to be able to enter the room?
Yes.
Can you describe that for the commission please?
Yes, I can. Food and medication was taken into the seclusion room. This is now in, in the D Y seclusion room where she was kept longer term. Food and medication were taken into her room twice a day. Five nurses were required to conduct that operation. Melanie was required to lie face down on the floor. She was restrained by five staff. One staff member holding each arm and one holding her on the back. Food and medication were left with her. And in circumstances where Melanie was dysregulated or circumstances where it was considered that she was, that it was not safe for staff to enter, she wasn't provided with food or medication on that occasion. My understanding is that if she was dysregulated for a long period of time, the police were then called and police affected the entry into the seclusion room.
Is this the period of time before she was moved into the area where there were two seclusion rooms together?
This continued afterwards. I, I'm not sure what the arrangements were in the first seclusion room. I only saw her on that one occasion. And as I wasn't representing her at the time, I wasn't reading her documents or the reports that were going to the Mental Health Review Tribunal. But it was certainly happening whilst she was in the, in the D Y seclusion rooms. She was moved there in about twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen. And prone position restraint was continued until, certainly until twenty seventeen, maybe even a little later.
The information you're giving us about the way in which food and medication was delivered to Melanie is based upon your examination of notes, is it?
On the examination of notes and also speaking to Melanie.
And your understanding based upon that information is that this was the standard procedure adopted on each occasion for the delivery of food and medication to Melanie?
Absolutely. It, it was the standard approach. I might add that it was contrary to the Department of Health's policy on aggression, seclusion and restraint.
In what respect?
In the respect that restraint was to be, was to be not a a standard, a standard approach. Also, there were a number of cautions in the policy, number of people, a number of criteria that if a patient met those criteria, that caution should be exercised in deciding to operate prone position restraint. There were about twelve of those criteria. Melanie met four of them.
May I, may I ask a question? You said, Miss Sears, that if the, the nurses decided not to deliver the food for the reasons you gave, then no food would be delivered. Would this go on, on more than one sequential occasion so that she was denied food for a longer period of time than just on one occasion?
I had asked that question and was never given a satisfactory answer. I was told that she wouldn't be left for any period of time without food. But I couldn't actually, either from asking the question at hearings or going through notes, work out how long food would not be available. I would hope that it would not have been very long. Surely, if there were any compassion in the way that regulations or policies and procedures were implemented, that it would not be too long. And, and certainly staff, particularly the more staff who had been given trauma-informed training would know how to help calm Melanie and how to address her, her escalating feelings of anxiety.
Miss Sears, with respect to-
Oh, sorry, Miss Quo, but may I just ask, did that also apply to the withholding of the medication as well? Or we're talking just about food and medication?
Food and medication were taken in at the same time. There, there were two entries into the room a day and they were on both occasions to deliver food and medication.
So you're saying, just to be clear in my head, that if they would do, would hold food, they were also withholding medication and you were never able to get a complete picture or answer in response to your queries?
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes, Miss Quo.
Thank you, Chair. Miss Sears, you described Melanie adopting a prone position and being restrained by staff, but did I understand you correctly that the staff didn't put Melanie on the floor, Melanie put herself on the floor in order for them to enter the room?
That's right. She was required to, to lie down and she was cooperative.
Now, Mr Davis, you talked, we've, we've mentioned the policy and you talk in your statement in particular about the New South Wales legislation being silent on the issue of seclusion. Can you explain to the commission what your concerns about that are?
So because the power to place a person in seclusion is solely in a, a health policy, there's no power then for, for the Mental Health Review Tribunal to make any orders or make any directions in relation to how seclusion is being provided? Whether it should end, whether it should be ceased for a period of time? Who should decide to undertake seclusion and so forth? That puts the Mental Health Review Tribunal in a rather invidious position where it makes orders for people to be detained in a place, knowing that that detention, in this case is a possible example, in Melanie's case, knowing that perhaps what's happening there in the form of seclusion doesn't accord with the evidence and the, the opinion of the tribunal, but they're confined to making an order that the person's mentally ill person, therefore they're an involuntary patient and they, they then continue to be detained in that place.
There is an anterior legal question, isn't there? And that is what is the authority to seclude in the first place?
So in New South Wales, we rely on, there's a policy, there's a health policy.
Yes, but a policy in order to be lawful has to have some legal authorisation underpinning it, doesn't it?
Correct. And that's, that's why I suggest a possible solution would be to create the power under the Mental Health Act and then providing the tribunal an oversight power in relation to seclusion.
You do refer in your statement, I think, to one case where the tribunal did make certain orders in relation to seclusion. Was that a special case in some way?
So it wasn't directly in, it wasn't an order that was directly in relation to seclusion. What happened there occurred at the forensic hospital where there was a division between those in the executive arm and a body of nursing staff and some other staff and the, the treating psychiatrist and some other nurses and some other staff. And the treating psychiatrist wished that person to be released from seclusion. Others did not want the person to be released from seclusion, including the then medical superintendent. So therefore there was a, there was a tension there. So the tribunal, they made an order that seclusion would be be made in accordance with what the treating psychiatrist directed. So it wasn't that the tribunal was saying, this is how seclusion is to be undertaken. It was seclusion is to be undertaken in accordance with the treating psychiatrist's decisions.
And how did it get to the tribunal in the first place?
So, yes, in the first instance, it was a review, a normal statutory review under, I think it's section forty-seven.
It was that every six months?
Correct. And during that time, that issue came up. I prosecuted an argument that there was, there was some issue there and that order was fashioned. So it was the order that the person continued to be detained at the forensic hospital. And then another aspect of it was that, that direction in relation to seclusion in accordance with what the treating psychiatrists wanted. And the, the issue then was it came back to the tribunal within two weeks because there continued to be some, some tension with the, with the executive arm at the, at the forensic hospital. The medical superintendent has the power to have the matter brought back before the tribunal. That happened two weeks later and it was confirmed.
Has it been authoritatively determined that on a six-month review, the tribunal does not have power to make any order with respect to seclusion that might be continuing?
So I also made an application in relation to Melanie's matter. I made an application and mounted an argument that the tribunal had an implied power to do that for the reasons I've explained and that was- And that was declined by the then president, President Cogswor.
Thank you.
And Mr Davis, can I just step you through that a little bit further? Is that because the issue with seclusion really is based on the moment-by-moment assessment of acute risk? Rather than the tribunal being able to make an order that may extend longer than that and somehow hobble clinical decision-making in the unit?
I'm not really sure, what are you asking?
Well, if you think about whether or not the tribunal might have a power to, for example, say, seclusion shouldn't continue, that would only be effective in that moment based on the presentation of the patient at that time because the clinical acuity or the risk that the patient might pose is something that can change from moment to moment. So it wouldn't be a blanket order in any event.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but the tribunal could fashion their orders in relation to the circumstances that are brought before them. Because seclusion is not always being provided in accordance just with clinical decisions. And I think the issue with Melanie brings that to the commission today. There's, I believe that there's been witnesses here who are not clinicians. They've been involved in giving evidence in relation to Melanie, a patient who was provided seclusion in a state-run hospital. So in those circumstances, if the tribunal was given an overarching power just to be used in specific circumstances, given a power then to make directions, knowing that the tribunal is an expert body that's very conservative and which should be committed, very conservative in relation to impinging on clinical decision-making. However, sometimes those decisions are not just confined to clinical considerations. There are in every aspect of life, political issues and so on.
I assume one point you're making is that it's one thing for procedures to be laid down in the manual and it's another for procedures to be laid down either in legislation or enforceable regulations or rules and then subject to supervision or administration by a tribunal?
Correct. My position is there needs to be a release valve, especially in circumstances where there's been clinicians sitting there asking for a release valve. So in the matter that I referred to, which involved a gentleman where there was a divide in the trading, the trading team and the executive, this wasn't Melanie, it was another, it was a gentleman who was confined to seclusion at the forensic hospital for an extended period of time. They were looking for that and in that circumstance, yes, there was an order made, fashioned to those circumstances. But in most other circumstances, that would not be possible.
And Mr Davis, in your statement, when you talk about the lack of governance, is that really what you're asking for? That there ought to be a higher body, perhaps the M H R T is best placed, to be the agent that will make the decision as to whether or not these particular treatments or the barriers for the long-term seclusion are being appropriately managed in the unit itself?
Yes, and that governance, from my position, should be articulated in legislation. Therefore, it brings it all together within that one body because the tribunal is the body that that make the decision in relation to that person's, for the care, treatment and control of the person. When they're making orders at the moment, the orders in relation to Melanie, the orders being made just in relation to her liberty, but the care and treatment are put to the side because, in essence, the tribunal are powerless because there's no power there in the legislation.
And if I've understood your statement correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're also saying that the patient needs an avenue to apply for those things to be reviewed? And that that's another aspect of that governance provision that you're seeking for legislative amendment in New South Wales?
Yes, knowing that the Mental Health Advocacy Service of Legal Aid, who we work for, we represent eighty-three percent of people who go before the civil jurisdiction of the M H R T proceedings and over ninety-eight percent of forensic proceedings. So we're there, so most of those decisions would be provided on advice. Representation would most likely be afforded. And there could be restraints in relation to the frequency in which a person can make such applications, which is expressed in other aspects of the Mental Health Act. That is, a person can't just infinite and make application after application. The tribunal can put a restraint on the amount of applications a person makes.
And also in your statement, just to be clear for those watching, you say that there are other patients at the forensic hospital like Melanie who have been held in long-term seclusion situations and it's been incredibly difficult to have them transitioned out of those situations.
Yes, so two people in particular come tonight. One is a woman who paralleled Melanie's period in seclusion. That woman spent around about six years in seclusion, the same as Melanie. And in the same, the same sort of process, she spent most of her time in seclusion. She didn't have a great deal of time out of seclusion, it was consistent for six years. And it ended around about mid last year, mid two thousand and twenty. And secondly, there was the other, the gentleman that I referred to a moment ago. And he's mentioned in the statement, he's the person who was, he's at paragraph forty-five of my statement. He was in seclusion for extended periods, twenty-seven days at a time and then other periods.
Miss Sears, can you explain to the commission your observations of Melanie over that period of time and how you were able to interact with her when she was in seclusion? Whether you were able to go in or you had to stay outside, for example?
When I came to take instructions from Melanie prior to Mental Health Review Tribunal hearings, I had to speak to her through the seclusion room door. And she was, this was the only way I could speak to her privately and without any nurses there. The seclusion room door has a window at head height, well, head height for a taller person than me. I would have to stand on tippy-toe or sit on a high stool that they had in the outer room and press a button on an intercom, talk through, this window, by the way, had Venetians in between two panes of glass. And it was difficult for Melanie to stand for any length of time, so she'd she would have to sit on her mattress on the floor when she got tired. And then I'd be, you know, trying to cramp my neck to keep eye contact with her. It was extremely difficult to get meaningful instructions, although Melanie was incredibly patient with the process. I might also add that unlike the heavy doors in prisons, there was no hatch in this door. A hatch might have made it easier to administer food and medication and it also would have made it easier to take instructions. When I'm in jails, I can speak through the hatch if a prisoner or a patient is secluded. I asked about that, apparently there's a safety issue with it. The alternative, if I wanted to speak to Melanie outside of the seclusion room, even today, would be to have a number of nurses in the room. It has been five nurses. I think that the number may have been reduced by one or two. And that means no confidentiality. My words could very easily be twisted or misunderstood. I did have the situation once where I agreed to take a phone call from Melanie and there was a social worker and five nurses in the room. I wasn't told who was in the room. And Melanie asked me about about a recently arrived set of physical restraints that had been imported from Scotland by the hospital. She was worried that she would be put in those restraints. And when I told her, no, they weren't bought for you, they were bought for another patient, the phone call was shut down. The next hearing of the Mental Health Review Tribunal, Melanie told me, when I took her instructions, that a nurse had told her that she would be put in restraints whenever she was taken out of the, out of the seclusion room. When I asked her psychiatrist about that, he said, oh, I was told you told her that. Or his exact words were, I was told legal told her that. So it's, as you can see, it's very easy if you don't have complete privacy to take instructions for misinterpretation, even non-malicious misinterpretation. People hear things differently. They talk amongst themselves, stories become changed. And it ended up with me being considered by Melanie's clinical team to be some sort of a villain telling her lies about what was to be happening to her.
Were you ever informed about mechanical restraints being used on Melanie?
I was informed about mechanical restraints being used on another patient. The woman patient, Mr Davis, told us about, told the commission about a minute ago. I have represented that woman once or twice. When the mechanical restraints were imported, I was representing this woman at the time. The tribunal asked for the restraints to be brought down during the lunch break so that they could see them and have their use explained to them. I volunteered to be a model for the restraints and was locked in them.
Can you describe what they were and how they were applied to you?
Yes, I can. They were soft restraints. They were made from a very dense fabric, probably some sort of a synthetic, with a padding in between layers of, the outer layers of the unterrible material. There was a belt that went around the waist. There were cuffs for the wrists and the ankles and there were chains made of this soft restraint that could be linked so that the person could, can I stand up and sort of-
You can stand up, sure.
So the restraints, there was a belt, there was the ankles, there was the wrists. And depending on how the restraint was to be used, a number of links could be added. So if you had a tall person with a big arms span, you could add more links. Short person, there were fewer. And there were enough links to go from the waist down to the ankles without necessarily tripping the person up. I must say, it was a very strange sensation. It was not painful, but it was a strange sensation. There was also a loop at the back so that a staff member could securely hold the person by the belt at the back of the waist. A very strange feeling and certainly not a restraint that I would ever like to be seen in if I were a patient or really to be seen by anyone else in the Mental Health Review Tribunal while I was modelling them.
Were those the restraints that Melanie asked you about in that conversation?
Yes, they were.
And with respect to the time that Melanie spent in seclusion, can you describe for the commission what the physical health effects for Melanie were over the years?
Melanie gained a great deal of weight. I noticed quite a weight gain from when I first saw her in twenty thirteen where I would have considered her to be chubby but not morbidly obese. She's put on a huge amount of weight. She's very obese. That, of course, has affected her physical health. She has developed diabetes as a result of her weight gain. Both obesity and diabetes have effects on other parts of the body, particularly the heart. Melanie is concerned about her heart because she has had problems in the past. She was trialed on clozapine at one stage and that had to be abandoned because she developed perimycoiditis, I think it's called. She also has gynecological problems which can be affected by weight. Not being able to exercise also makes it very difficult to keep weight down and that affects the metabolism as well. She has scoliosis, I don't know whether the weight will affect the scoliosis.
Maybe we could just leave it at that because rather than go into the details of Melanie's physical condition, I think we understand the significant effect of weight gain.
Thank you.
Miss Sears, with respect to those physical issues, though, there were also compounding issues with Melanie not being able to get out of seclusion and do the relevant exercise or walking that was expected by the team, you would agree with that, wouldn't you?
Yes, I would.
And you speak in your statement about at one time Melanie not being able to get the time out because she had swollen feet?
That's correct. Melanie's feet became swollen and her walking shoes did not fit her. There was no mention in the report that went to the Mental Health Review Tribunal that Melanie was, had been unable to go for a perimeter walk, as they call it, for four weeks before that time. I only found out about it because Melanie mentioned it in passing when I was speaking to her, taking her instructions. I raised that with the tribunal. And the reason I was given was that there was no one to purchase new shoes for her. Eventually, a staff member did volunteer and go and get the shoes. There was discussion at that particular hearing about whose responsibility it was. The C J P, Criminal Justice Programme, said that they could possibly fund someone to do some shopping for her, but it would have taken four to six weeks for them to organise it.
And that was just simply a relation to needing some shoes that were suitable to walk in?
That's correct.
Now, when Melanie transitioned into the the unit where they had done the two seclusion rooms, can you describe to the tribunal what those rooms looked like?
Yes, I can. From the entrance to the D Y unit, there's a door to the right where you enter the area where the seclusion unit is. It's totally separate from the rest of the ward. You walk through the door. On the left-hand side, there's a room that can be used for clinical observations. And I believe that also has a door to the outside and one door to the seclusion area. As you walk in, to the left, there's the first room. As I described, the heavy door with the viewing panel at a tall person's height. You enter the room, there is no natural light. The room is bare and has been, always been bare apart from a mattress on the floor, which I think may have been replaced by a taller type foam bed. uh a taller type uh foam bed. Uh for a long while, there was a blanket, uh possibly a pillow. There were no pillowcases for quite some time. To the right, there's a bathroom with a toilet and a shower and a safety mirror, which is a sheet of metal, like the aluminium, that's, that's polished. So it can't be broken and, and use for self harm, but it, it doesn't give a particularly uh good reflection. So if you're proud of your appearance and want to do your hair, it'd be a bit difficult. Uh window to the outside, there might have been a window high up, I'm, I'm not sure. It may have been totally enclosed. Then you can, uh the nurse outside, uh the room can open the door onto what has been referred to as the courtyard. Uh it is really nothing more than a corridor without a roof on it. The floor is uh sort of spongy black material like what they put in uh children's playgrounds. I might add that that's the only soft surface. There's no padding. Uh even though this is a seclusion room for people who are meant to be quite unwell and dysregulated. Uh the uh, the outdoor corridor runs between the two seclusion rooms. There's a very, very tall fence, brick fence. You can't see over it. You can't see anything beyond the seclusion rooms. You can see the sky. That's the only nature that, that's um visible. Uh then if you go out of that room and you're moving then towards the second room uh from the, the outside, there's a gap between the two seclusion rooms where the nurses have a nurse's station, the desk with uh Melanie's records. I often sat there when I uh was examining her records prior to representing her. That area, there's uh a tall glass window, so staff could supervise Melanie quite well uh when she's out in the corridor. Then there's the uh, the second seclusion room. Uh similar to before, except there's now a television on the inside, high up with a sp- screen. Same uh idea with the bathroom. And I think at different times, the rooms have been changed over uh for their purposes. One has been kept as a sleeping room and the other one has been kept as a as a, a living area, a day room. I believe that most recently, uh Melanie was allowed to put a few posters up inside the room. Outside, uh in the long uh outside room, there's a long white wall. Early on in her seclusion, that was pretty much bare. Over time, Melanie was allowed to have pictures up, including pictures of her therapy dog. Although at one stage when she became dysregulated and made threats about the dog, uh all those pictures were taken down and the wall was bare again. And uh over time, she's been allowed now to have um more pictures and, and materials on that wall.
Now, with respect to the, the two seclusion rooms that were Melanie's rooms.
Yeah.
How did the cleaners get into those rooms?
Well, I don't know that they did. Uh on uh the uh, the twenty seventh of July twenty seventeen, the Mental Health Review Tribunal hearing. Uh the tribunal had uh inspected the rooms. Uh I instituted a practice of inviting the tribunal to inspect Melanie's rooms before each hearing. Uh the tribunal found uh that the place was not clean. Uh there were questions asked about what the arrangements were for cleaning. Uh the tribunal was told that patients are expected to clean the rooms themselves. Now, Melanie was not allowed access to anything, certainly not a broom, a bucket, a mop or uh water and cleaning fluids. Um there were questions asked about, well, how could we organise uh for a cleaner to come in? Well, it would have to happen when she's out of seclusion. Uh and there was certain times set down when, uh at, at that stage, that, that Melanie was out of seclusion, short periods of time. But they weren't regular. They weren't every day. So if Melanie was not considered well enough to come out of the seclusion room, she wouldn't be uh, she'd be there all day. Uh and we were told it wasn't possible to schedule the cleaners to come in. And there was some difficulty expressed in being able to just ring uh the cleaners or whoever was responsible for the cleaners and say, look, can you come down now? Uh she's out for half an hour, can you give it a clean?
Can I ask you both if you're familiar with the uh governance group or the high level group that's involved in looking at transition options for Melanie?
Yes.
And what is your understanding of what's happening with the identification of a suitable facility for Melanie?
Mr Davis, mate.
Um it's been chaired by uh the Public Guardian, um Salisbury. Um and it's, at the moment, it's moving towards um looking at a property. Um and hopefully moving towards getting some supports under the N D I S. And looking towards moving Melanie to the community.
Uh I, I was uh an observer at the most recent uh meeting of the governance group. Uh there hasn't been any commitment to ongoing funding uh for uh care, what's called SIL funding, independent funding. And also a provider was identified who is in the process of building a, a series of units uh in the Morrissey area. No definite decision has been able to be made or no commitment has been made to taking on uh that, that model, that, that care provider. So if a decision isn't made promptly, it's conceivable that all the units could be allocated to other people and then have to begin again for a service provider and for a uh an accommodate, a, a, a building.
Now, are you aware, Miss Sears, that Melanie's been moved out of the long term seclusion area since the thirteenth of November last year?
Yes, she was moved out on uh two, at, at two P M on Friday, the thirteenth of November twenty twenty.
There's a core team of staff working with her in the unit?
Yes, that's what I understand.
And are you um aware that that's going well or have you heard how that's going?
Uh yes, uh I spoke to the social worker on the, the ward just afterwards and he said that it, it was going well. I also spoke to uh Melanie's social worker, uh so social worker, um um public guardian before she went on, on leave recently and she said it was going extremely well. She said that uh Melanie, if she feels overwhelmed by the environment on the ward, asks if she can go to her bedroom uh just to withdraw and that's, that's fine. And uh I understand that there were two very brief uh periods of seclusion, one that she requested herself, another one where she was taken to a seclusion room uh but left there with the door open. Now, I don't know how long that was for. I haven't seen the, the seclusion record. Otherwise, she's doing very well.
Now, with respect to facilities and forensic uh hospitals for women, as I understand it, the unit at the forensic hospital for women has few beds. I think, Miss Sears, you said it was eighteen. It's certainly somewhere around there.
Yes, that's right.
Is it your opinion that there should be more options for women like Melanie?
Absolutely. More options for women like Melanie and more options for, for all uh women forensic patients. The forensic hospital uh women's unit is the only unit that's available for correctional patients as well as forensic patients and for involuntary civil patients. So the demand for beds far outstrips the supply. Uh it, it's also um the first step in a, a forensic patients or a or involuntary uh patient rehabilitation and return to the community. The next step is to go to a medium secure unit. It's a step down. There are only three in the state for all uh people who need a medium secure facility and of those three, only one takes women.
Do you know how many, excuse me? Do you know how many beds in the one medium secure unit that takes women there are?
It's the Banya unit and I am not sure. I know that a similar unit in Orange has twenty beds. Um I would imagine that Banya has a similar number of beds.
But not all of those beds are allocated to women, is that what you're saying?
No, that's correct. It's a mixed, what's the only mixed uh medium secure unit?
And Mr Davis, you said in paragraph twenty three of your statement that the prospect for discharge from the forensic hospital with respect to Melanie, this is, is distant because the project remains in the planning stages?
Yes.
Have you come this far before with Melanie? And had things fail?
Yeah, there's been, yes, there's been attempts before. I think it's articulated more precisely in Miss Sears' statement in relation to previous efforts to uh have Melanie discharged to the community. Um and they've all failed. What's happened in the past hasn't been under the N D I S. The, the current plan is under the N D I S.
Have you had occasion to see other patients transition out of the forensic hospital with N D I S support?
May not personally?
Yes, you, Mr Davis or Miss Sears?
Yes, y- yes, um. Well, I know, I know that it, it happens. I'm just trying to think which of my regular clients might have gone out with N D I S. I know quite a number of them have uh N D I S packages or have applied for N D I S packages. I.
Might add, um so it's unusual for forensic patients to be discharged from the forensic hospital to the community. There's no legal barrier to it. It's just that there's, the normal process is.
To the medium?
Medium secure facility and so forth. Quite often the N D I S packages, packages come on board whilst people are at the forensic hospital because it takes a long time. Uh but they're carried over to when they go to the MSUs and then transition into the community.
All right. And when you say MSU, that's the medium secure units?
Correct.
And that's the, the general pathway for the forensic patient? But the civil patient? Would, would it be the same for the civil patients?
In most circumstances. So a civil patient in the forensic, the forensic hospital, going back a little, the fr- term, the forensic hospital is just a, just a banner. It just means it's the most secure mental health facility. There's sixty me- over sixty mental health facilities in New South Wales. It's just the most secure one. And civil patients, the most um risk, risky, for want of a better word, civil patients sometimes are detained at the forensic hospital and then they can go to other mental health facilities.
And Mr Davis, you tell us, I think in your statement, paragraph fifty eight and following about Long Bay Hospital being a health facility and what happens to uh people that you say uh require involuntary mental health care being transferred. Can you just explain to us how that works and who are the people that you're actually talking about in those paragraphs?
Okay, so I'm specifically speaking of um people who are imprisoned in the general prison population, either on remand or sentence. And when they fall under the uh, when they satisfy the test of being a mentally ill person, as I described earlier, therefore they need care in a mental health facility. New South Wales is the only jurisdiction that I'm aware of. And I refer to an article at um footnote twenty seven, I think supports this, that New South Wales is the only jurisdiction in Australia where there's a mental health facility within a correctional facility. Which means that, that when you're in a mental health facility and you're an involuntary patient, that allows um coercive treatment to be provided. However, if you're not in a mental health facility, that is, whilst you're in prison, involuntary treatment, coercive treatment can't be provided to. So that means that when the person, the, the inmate is in the general prison population, they're deemed to be a mentally ill person. They, they have to be transferred over most often to Long Bay Prison Hospital, which is a gazette of mental health facility. Women sometimes go down to the forensic hospital, but unfortunately sometimes remain at Long Bay Prison Hospital as well. And adolescents go to the forensic hospital. And my position is that there should not be a gazette of mental health facility within a correctional setting. Because there's no need for it. The studies show the efficacy is, is not supported and problems have arisen in the past, which was brought out in the recent primary on quest in relation to David Dunga.
When you say people have, within the general prison population, been found to require involuntary mental health care because they have a mental illness, who's made that determination?
So it has to be two uh medical officers, one, at least one being a psychiatrist. They can.
So this is after conviction?
Correct.
People are in the, in the prison system, there is some manifestation of mental illness?
Exactly. And they come to the conclusion that that person needs to go to a mental health facility? And so they complete, in common language, it's being scheduled. So they are scheduled and therefore the process is to go to Long Bay. That creates a lot of problems that I've just described. Another problem is because there's only one place where they're going to, quite often delay occurs. It's the same process that applies to us in the community. However, us in the community, if somebody scheduled us, we would be in a mental health facility within the hour most likely with the assistance of the police or ambulance if required. Whereas prisoners quite often wait four, six, eight weeks within the prison to get to Long Bay because there's only Long Bay.
So when um they get to Long Bay, the mental health facility, does that, would that include people with intellectual disabilities, people with cognitive disability?
Um if they've got a dual diagnosis.
Has to be mental illness plus?
Correct. So you'd have to fit that. And when we say mental illness, mental illness is not, to be a mentally ill person and being captured under the Mental Health Act, it's not based on diagnosis. It's based on symptomology, risk and noted less restrictive form of care. Banners are avoided because history tells, using banners in relation to coercive measures is, is a wrong thing to do. But yes, quite often people have a dual diagnosis and Melanie carries that. She's an example of that.
So it's that cohort of prisoners that you were just speaking about, that's in addition to the cohort who are approaching the end of their limiting term and might be transitioned into the forensic hospital under the me- the Mental Health Review Tribunal provisions?
Correct, because I'm talking about people who are not forensic patients. A person who's subject to a limiting term or an extension order, order is a forensic patient.
These are people in, these are people in prison who happen to have a mental illness which is discerned, diagnosed, whatever, after they've been incarcerated.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And that's a number that would. And that's a number that would be variable depending on the people in the prisons needing that level of treatment and care. But the number of patients coming to the end of a limiting term and requiring transfer to the forensic hospital would be easier to plan for. Would you agree with me about that?
Yes, if they need to go to a forensic hospital, yes.
And the demand on the forensic hospital bed seems to be very high and getting higher.
Yes, absolutely agree with that.
So there's a body of people who are in custodial settings who need to get into the forensic hospital. And there are people in the forensic hospital, some of whom may be able to transfer to a medium secure unit or to perhaps NDIS-supported accommodation. But there are difficulties in making those transfers happen. And so there's a bit of a bottleneck in the forensic hospital, is that right?
There's a bottleneck, but might I comment, it's not necessarily the case. I don't see the need that a person who's in prison has to go to the forensic hospital for care and treatment in relation to their mental illness. My understanding is in other jurisdictions, there's agreements between their respective corrective services and mental health facilities in the community. And they are then cared for in the same space as you and I are. Not maybe not every mental health facility, but some have some agreements in relation to the transfer and the relationships between corrective services and the healthcare providers. It's just biggest belief, why, why we have to, why we have to have this delay? It doesn't accord with concepts of equivalence, the Mandela rules and so forth, that why should, why should a prisoner who has a mental illness have to wait two, six, eight weeks to get into a mental health facility? When I I'd have to, if I waited two hours, it'd be, that'd be a stretch.
And that wouldn't accord either with uh perhaps necessary treatment for a physical health condition?
Correct, absolutely, absolutely. If somebody in a prison has a heart attack, they're into an ambulance and down to the local tertiary level hospital and they're getting the same care as Kerry Hacker in the next page.
Or maybe not.
Thank you, Miss Sears and Mister Davis. I have no further questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um I'll ask uh my colleagues whether they have any questions, starting with Commissioner Mason in Brisbane.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson?
No, thank you.
And Commissioner McEwan?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Uh I will then, i- is any uh legal rep, does any legal representative wish to ask Miss Sears or Mister Davis any questions?
No, thank you, Commissioner.
No, thank you, Commissioner.
In that case, thank you very much both for coming to the Sydney Hearing Room in order to give your evidence. We appreciate your statements and your suggestions for change that we will look at very carefully. We thank you for the assistance you've given to the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
Should we now adjourn?
Yes, thank you, Chair, until one thirty Queensland time.
Yes, all right. We'll adjourn to one thirty Queensland time, two thirty uh PM in the eastern states other than Queensland. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, thank you. Yes, uh Miss Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. The next witness is Doctor David Manchester. You'll find a copy of Doctor Manchester's written statement at tab one and his CV at tab two of tender bundle B one. I ask to tender these documents into evidence and for them to be marked as exhibit eleven point seven point one and eleven point seven point two respectively.
Yes, that may be done. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Doctor Manchester, thank you very much for uh coming to give evidence today to the Royal Commission. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, she will administer to you the, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Um uh Miss Crawford will now ask you some questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you're, just so you're aware, Miss Crawford is in our Brisbane Hearing Room together with Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Atkinson is joining us remotely. Commissioner McEwan is in the Sydney Hearing Room with me, so we are scattered throughout the country and you are in Sydney, I believe.
That's right. Thank you.
There you are. At a different part of Sydney. Yes, Miss Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. Doctor Manchester, you've provided a statement to the Commission dated the eleventh of September twenty twenty. That's correct, isn't it?
It is, yes.
Is there anything in that statement that you wish to amend or add to?
No, thank you.
Now, your background is as a clinical psychologist?
Yes.
And you've got experience of people in Australia and the United Kingdom as a clinical psychologist for more than twenty years?
Yes.
Can you explain to the Commission how you came to be involved with writing a report about Melanie's situation?
I used to work for ADAC as the practice leader in psychology for ADAC and during the four years that I was there, I also worked with Vince Poncio, who is the director of Intellectual Disability Mental Health with the New South Wales Ministry of Health now. And my understanding is that Vince recommended me to the Integrated Service Response as somebody who might be able to assist in the case of Melanie. And I got a request from the Integrated Service Response to prepare my report.
And your report was prepared in August of two thousand and nineteen?
That's correct.
In preparing your report, you didn't actually meet with or assess Melanie personally, did you?
That's correct.
But you relied on a number of documents that you were provided with, and those documents are summarized in the body of your report.
I did, and in addition to that, I relied on interviews with treating staff members.
Did you have any occasion to actually visit the forensic hospital that Melanie was being held in, in the preparation of your report?
I did. I went out to visit the ward where she was being held and I was escorted around that environment by uh Doctor O'Reardon, the treatment psychiatrist and also Mister Andrew Core, the senior clinical psychologist there at the hospital.
And in preparing your report, you considered Melanie's personal history as well as her forensic history?
I did.
And you were aware, weren't you, that she had been a, a child who was identified at a very young age as being a child in need of care and protection?
Yes.
And you had been also made aware with respect to the documents that you had access to of her particular um placement issues and forensic issues, including the offences of which she had been subject to the limiting term?
I was, yes.
Now, in the course of looking at the documents that you were provided with, it became apparent to you that Melanie had complex diagnostic profile? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And within that profile, she had an intellectual disability?
Yes.
As well as personality vulnerabilities?
Yes.
Now, the personality vulnerabilities, those are developmental type issues, is that right?
Not especially so. You don't have to have an intellectual disability to have the personality disorder diagnoses that Melanie has.
Well, Manchester, can we just go, can we just go back a step, please? Um how did you come to prepare this report?
I was approached by the Integrated Service Response at the Ministry of Health and I was asked to uh prepare the report on Melanie.
What purpose?
Uh the purpose was to provide an opinion on to what might be helpful in terms of going forward with treatment and support for Melanie that might reduce the use of restrictive practices currently, or at that time, that were in place.
And why were you brought in to do that? Why was it thought uh on your understanding necessary for someone outside the treating group to do this?
I think there was a sense of a uh of an, of an impasse being reached really, that there was, there was a great amount of information that would be gathered in other assessments. And I felt people uh were a little bit stuck on what might be the way to move forward. I think in particular, and I mentioned this at the beginning of my report, I was asked to address the recommendations by Emma Rudman in the Star Report, which was a very comprehensive uh earlier report. And the Ministry of Health felt there was a good sense of what was needed, but they wanted a bit more clarification uh about how that might be achieved, so what the next steps might be.
When you say they, you mean who?
The Ministry of Health and the Integrated Service Response and the stakeholders uh with whom they were liaising.
And is that Elizabeth Hewitt, or was it Elizabeth Hewitt?
It was, yes.
What her role? What what was her role?
She was principal policy officer with the Integrated Service Response.
I noticed, and you've already said, that you did not interview or see Melanie herself. And I judge from your report that that uh had something to do with uh what you were told about her behaviour. But is it difficult to do a report on somebody such as Melanie without actually seeing her in the environment in which she is uh being placed and the way in which she is being dealt with in that environment?
It's, it's possible to do a report without actually interviewing the person, and I have done desktop reports previously where the, the majority of the evidence that's helpful comes from the behavioural evidence that is amassed over, in this case, many years in the reports of other people. And of course, because many of those reports are by treating clinicians, one gets a very good sense of what Melanie's personal goals are and also what her frustrations are. So uh that's a long answer to your question. Uh the shorter answer is yes, I think it is possible to do a report without seeing the patient in a circumstance like this.
And would it be possible to do a better report if uh one had seen Melanie and understood from her what her goals were?
I don't know, it would have added too much because I, I feel that Melanie would not have been putting through a lot of the information that I feel is important to know in cases like this to, to unlock uh the impasse that I mentioned and to move forward. A lot of the issues are at a systemic level, as I think I, I, I pointed out in my report, since I reached a conclusion, and that would be something that I feel Melanie would be across or that I would expect her to be across.
But she would be across her own expectations and hopes, wouldn't she?
Sure, yes. Then I was satisfied that I had a reasonable understanding of what they were from the reports of other clinicians who had spoken with her and who had asked her those questions, she had answered them.
That might have been the clinician's perception of what Melanie hoped for.
Yes, it would have been.
Hmm, yes, thank you. Yes, Miss Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. Doctor Manchester, you were specifically brought in because by the time in twenty nineteen that you did your report, Melanie had been in long-term seclusion for six years. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
And in fact, that long-term seclusion was um creating some tensions within the unit between the staff.
Again, that's right, yeah.
And there were differences of opinion as to whether or not continuing with seclusion as it was was clinically indicated. Or whether, in fact, Melanie should be managed in the open ward or the subacute area of the ward, rather than being held in seclusion on that ongoing basis. Do you agree?
Yes, I do.
Now, you've spoken in your statement about restrictive practices being a behaviour management strategy. Can you explain to the Commission why restrictive practices being implemented as a behaviour management strategy don't address therapeutic goals?
I can, yes. And I I think the first thing I'd say is, in my report, I don't describe them as a behaviour management strategy. I think I describe them as a reactive management strategy. And what I mean by that is that they, they typically, well, not invariably based, but occasionally, they typically come into place in reaction to aggression. So somebody, somebody react, uh aggressive and restrictive practices put in place. And the aim, of course, is to reduce risk. There's less indication that it has a therapeutic effect. And that's, that's what I had meant by, it's a re, it's more a reactive strategy than a therapeutic strategy.
And you've just said that there's no indication that they reduce risk? Is that what you just said? I was having a bit of trouble hearing you.
Uh uh my apologies. I, what I said was that reactive strategies are they are usually, they are, they are short-term strategies that are to contain risk, to, to reduce risk. They're not typically thought of as therapeutic endeavours that would be akin to treatment that help a person to cope better in the future.
And can you explain why then seclusion might appear to be an effective tool in an environment like the forensic hospital for a patient like Melanie?
Well, I think what it does is, it does reduce risk because, of course, you reduce the opportunity for somebody to be in physical contact with another person that they might hurt. So it it can appear to do exactly what, what it's meant to do, and and that is, yes, it it does reduce risk. And that could be reinforcing for staff. It could be reinforcing for a system because it keeps people safer. And once you're in that, that mode of responding, it can be more difficult to, if you like, uh withdraw from it or to retreat from it or to use it less because it it has its own advantages, as people are reassured that they are safer in the workplace.
What is the impact on the patient? Notwithstanding that the people outside the seclusion room might feel safer, but what about the patient's response to the seclusion?
Well, typically, when, when patients have been asked about their, their experience of, of seclusion, of course, to get somebody to go to seclusion often requires physical restraint. And a patient's response to being physically restrained is the response that you would expect of anybody, of you or I, to be restrained against our will. And it's distressing. And I would add, add to this, that one of the uh extra difficulties that you you come across when using physical restraint and seclusion with individuals with cognitive impairment is they have less ability to control the outcome in the future. And what I mean by that is that if the contingencies are such that you will go into seclusion if you are aggressive in the future and you have less ability through your cognitive impairment to learn adaptive behaviour, to replace your aggression, then you are powerless to reduce the likelihood of being physically restrained and secluded in the future.
So being in seclusion, then, it's a very difficult thing to bring that to an end with a person who has an intellectual impairment. Because being in seclusion isn't assisting them to deal with whatever it is that might trigger a behavioural response outside of seclusion.
In and of itself, seclusion won't teach the person any new skills. And that's, that's the dilemma, that seclusion in the absence of any therapeutic endeavour to, to teach alternative behaviours, to help the person cope in a different way, that's a dilemma that a system has as soon as it introduces. that's a dilemma that a system has as soon as it introduces seclusion.
And that's where you talk about being stuck in the cycle of the restrictive practice and the lack of other options being able to be tried, is that correct?
Well, that's certainly a part of it. What tends to happen is if you introduce seclusion and the physical restraint to take somebody to seclusion, because it's very distressing and the person reacts to that, they escalate in their aggression. They essentially escalate in one of the very few ways they're able to do. Now, when that happens, that can lead a service to think, well, we need to increase or escalate our use of seclusion, because clearly we're not secluding the person for long enough or often enough, and so it increases. Once that happens, then the patient escalates also. And so you're caught in a cycle of escalation, which, in my experience, typically ends with very high levels of seclusion, very high levels of restrictive practice, and somebody in a bare, isolated room, sometimes not in their own clothes even, and sometimes those clothes have been taken off them and they're in a gown that they can't rip, and they stay there for a very long time.
And then with respect to bringing the patient out of seclusion, with Melanie, there was the use of a traffic light system. Can you explain to the commissioners how that was expected to work for a patient like Melanie?
Well, I didn't speak to the person who made that system. I did speak to your staff members who were having to operate with that system. My understanding of the expectation was that Melanie needed to meet particular criteria, so there was an expectation that she wouldn't engage in a number of behaviours that were listed, and that there may have been some behaviours that she was expected to engage in also. And then if she was to do that for a sustained period of time, which I think was for an entire shift, then she would ostensibly, she would have earned some time out of seclusion. I can go on to say what I think the difficulty with that system was, if that's helpful, or I can...
I would like you to elaborate on that if you can, please.
Yeah, so the difficulty with the system is if you're going to have a behavioural system where, essentially what you're hoping to do through a system like that, is you're hoping to reinforce alternative behaviour. So you're hoping to strengthen the likelihood that more pro-social behaviour will occur. Now, that's a perfectly reasonable behavioural technology to use. The difficulty is that it's a sophisticated technology to use in a way that is helpful. And what occurred, I think, in the behaviour management system that used this traffic light approach, was the bar was set simply far too high. So Melanie was being expected to achieve a level of behavioural control that was unrealistic, given her cognitive impairments. So that's the first thing, the bar was too high. The next thing, which was a difficulty, was to assist her to get anywhere near that level of behavioural control. She would need to be supported to learn skills that would assist her, that would support her to do that. And the technology to teach those kind of behavioural skills to somebody with an intellectual disability, that technology is there, but it wasn't being used in this instance. And the only other thing that I would say about this system, and it was particularly problematic, is given Melanie's history of sustained abuse over many years by significant others, that understandably, there's been a severe disruption in attachments. And she is, I think, perfectly reasonably very suspicious of people, it's difficult for her to trust others. And the Behaviour Management Guidelines stipulated that if she were to achieve this level of control, she would come out. And the guidelines were such that to come out of seclusion and spend time beyond the confines of the rooms where she was most of the time, required five staff trained in physical restraint. So the upshot of this was that on occasion Melanie actually had earned that right to be out. And the system didn't support her, didn't meet their side of that contract, if you like, and said, oh, we don't have enough staff. And that's incredibly problematic, because it further disrupts any sense of a therapeutic relationship and a belief that the staff can be trusted. And it's not a criticism of staff, I totally understand it's very difficult to operate within that system. However, these are some of the difficulties of the primary therapeutic approach that was being, or a primary therapeutic approach that was being used.
At paragraph fifteen of your statement, you talk about Melanie, you being of the view that Melanie has experienced shaping at the forensic hospital. Can you explain to the commission what shaping is?
Well, shaping is a behavioural term that refers to an approach to eliciting a behaviour that you don't already have in your repertoire. And what I mean by that is that if you want to teach somebody something they've never done before, you can't wait for them to do it and then reinforce that behaviour, because they don't have that behaviour in their repertoire. So what you would normally do instead is you would break that behaviour down into steps. And you would start off with a very small step at the very beginning, and you would reinforce that step. And then that was being elicited reliably, you would then add on the next step in that behavioural chain, and you would reinforce that. And you would carry on doing that until you reach the terminal behaviour. So a positive example of that, a very concrete example of that would be if you're teaching somebody to cook a meal and they've never cooked before, well, you would break that task down to its component parts, and you would start with, perhaps the first thing is you arrange the ingredients for them, you teach them how to take a lid off a jar. Now, that's a positive example. An example of more, I suppose, more negative shaping, and this is what I'm alluding to in my report, is when you come across individuals who are in very high levels of seclusion, very high levels of restraint, it is absolutely the case that they often exhibit extremely aggressive behaviour, frequently when given the opportunity. When you look back through their records, they weren't always exhibiting that level of aggressive behaviour. They often started off at a much lower level. And what has happened is, typically, what has happened is that something in their environment has upset them, maybe they didn't get what they wanted from a particular staff member, and they've become upset by that and they've reacted to that. And then the staff or the system have responded to that. And then sometimes, and you'll hear this sometimes in staff discussing how to manage behaviour, oh, that's attention-seeking behaviour, so we're going to downplay that or we're going to ignore that. And it's problematic when you hear that for a number of reasons. But one is, if you attempt to downplay it or to ignore it or to erase it through punishment, the person escalates. And it escalates sometimes to behaviour they hadn't exhibited before, but it's a higher level of aggression. And then the system responds again in a way that may be reinforcing for the person. And then the person, through shaping, they've now arrived at this higher level of aggressive behaviour to exhibit when they're frustrated. And then similarly, and it's really just repeating the same process, at some point the service will try to extinguish that behaviour through ignoring it or downplaying it or punishing it or taking away a particular valued activity, and the person escalates again, and then so does the system. So that's really an example of negative shaping, I suppose. So I can give you a concrete example just from my own clinical practice. I assessed somebody several years ago who had very high levels of restrictive practice. They were in seclusion a great deal of time, and they were out of seclusion, they were being supported during the day by four to one. There were, I think from memory, there were cameras in every room. When they were in seclusion, their clothes were taken from them, because they had started to rip their clothes and tie clothes and a ligament around their neck to strangle themselves. And they were placed in a gown that they weren't able to destroy. Those weren't the behaviours they started their challenging behaviour career with. When you went back through the records, they first came to the notice of services because they were making nuisance phone calls to emergency services. So what you see is you see this progression through shaping.
And in your opinion, is that what's happened with Melanie?
I think that's certainly part of it, yes, in my opinion.
Now, with respect to the model of care, you've opined in your statement that there needs to be a psychology-oriented model of care. Can you just explain what that would look like for Melanie?
The model of care that I think would be helpful is a model of care that focuses on her her primary impairment as being one of behaviour, that it's her behaviour that causes her to be in seclusion. Where I've worked with clients who are subject to these levels of seclusion restraint, they often have a number of diagnoses, mental health diagnoses, and they're often very similar, schizophrenia or bipolar disorder or antisocial personality disorder or borderline personality disorder, as well as intellectual disability. You can have all of those diagnoses, and you can still live a life free of restraint and seclusion if your behaviour is appropriate to the situation, doesn't put you or others in danger. So my feeling is that leaving all the diagnoses to one side, a primary focus of treatment and support is on behaviour. And in particular, taking a neuro-behavioural approach and that prefix neuro is to recognise that Melanie has very significant cognitive difficulties that will affect how quickly she's able to learn alternative behaviours, and will affect the degree of structure and support she requires in breaking behaviours down for her and teaching her, through sometimes through the method I've just mentioned of shaping, teaching her how to learn new behaviours. So that's what I mean by a psychology approach, and I really just use the term psychology as an umbrella term because of psychology's emphasis upon the importance of behaviour and functional activity.
And with Melanie's situation in the forensic hospital, there appeared to be a degree of notoriety around her dangerousness. Can you speak to those tensions within the staff at that time when they were looking after her and why those opinions become quite entrenched?
Well, I can only speak in more general terms about why that happens when I work clinically with individuals who can engage in extreme behaviour. And it's, I think it's a perfectly natural tendency for people to be frightened by, firstly, what can be difficult to understand, secondly, what can be perceived as difficult to predict. And it's a flow-on from the perceived difficulty of prediction, and that is your ability to protect yourself or to manage that risk. And I think as soon as somebody gains a reputation for being frightening, dangerous, unpredictable, then that's a reputation that can understandably spread.
And what's the impact on the patient of being labelled in that way?
Well, I think it can be a double-edged, really. The practical impact on the patient is that people can become frightened to work with the person. The other impact on the patient is, and this is critical for working therapeutically with a person with Melanie's difficulties, the other impact is on the mindset of staff. And by mindset, what I mean is, it is of absolute fundamental importance that staff are able to understand the degree of control that Melanie has over her dangerous behaviour is adversely affected by her cognitive impairments, it's adversely affected by her trauma history, and it means that she has really very minimal control over her behaviour. And one of the difficulties that you have with this perception of dangerous people in these instances is there can be a very understandable belief on the part of staff that the person can control their behaviour more than they really can. And in psychology, this is a very well-known, it's probably one of psychology's more robust findings. This is a very well-known thinking error, it's called the fundamental attribution error. Janice, with respect to you, you will have this just as much as I will and anybody else in the commission. And the fundamental attribution error simply refers to our tendency to attribute unpleasant behaviour in others to their personality and less to external factors or ameliorating factors. And the reverse of that is true as well, that if we do something that's particularly good, we tend to think that was entirely us and nothing to do with environments. If you and I do something that's extremely dangerous, we tend to attribute it more to the environment and the stress we were under, rather than our personality. So I think, I mentioned it was a double side, so that's one side, the effect that it has upon staff and their mindset. The other effect that it can have, and I think, you'll read this in other reports, is if Melanie has a very low sense of self-worth, and this is an important part of treatment, is giving somebody a sense of self-worth through giving them achievements. If she has a low sense of self-worth, if your only sense of self-worth comes through how frightening you are and your reputation, it can actually be reinforcing for you. It becomes your only way of getting esteem.
So looking at Melanie's situation, you recommended a core team be put in place to really break that cycle, didn't you?
Yes.
And that has happened in the unit over the past three months or so. But the team that you were recommending, not only was that to be a team that were recruited internally, but perhaps also externally. And it was more important, if I've understood your evidence in your statement correctly, that these are people who are willing to work with Melanie and have particular attributes themselves, perhaps not only professional attributes, but also personal attributes?
Yes.
Now, that staffing model with the core team requires supports for the team, doesn't it?
It does.
And those supports, the supports that have been put in place are that the core team have regular meetings together?
Yes.
And they've had planning days as well? That they also have external group supervision? And there is also external individual supervision, I'm not sure for how many of them at this point, but that seems to be in the plan as well. And there is also easy access to senior clinicians for the core team with respect to any advice that they might need on a moment-by-moment basis. Is that enough, or is there anything else that might be implemented to support the core team?
I think the first thing to say is that I think it's very impressive. And I think I made clear in my report that the primary treating clinicians at the hospital, I think, are very impressive. And the difficulty isn't in their clinical opinion. And all the changes that you've just described, I expect are driven by those clinicians, and they're very positive. With regards to, is it enough? They're the treating clinicians, I have respect for them, and if they say that's enough, then I would defer to that. If I was asked, from my own experience, what can be especially helpful, in addition to what you've described, I can certainly answer that, and with your permission, I'll do that now.
Please do.
And what can also be helpful is that the core team are incredibly important, and the stability of the core team are incredibly important, because most of Melanie's aggression will be reactive, and it'll be reactive to people. It will be how she perceives she's being spoken to, or whether or not she perceives somebody has broken a particular agreement that she had with them. And it can be the smallest thing that over time she has become a trigger for her. But essentially, this is the first thing, that when you think about change architecture in cases like this, yes, the building's important, what's incredibly important though is who is in front of her, physically talking to her and giving Melanie feedback, guidance and instruction. So you get the kind of empathy and kindness and support and consistency across those variables that you need. and support and consistency across those variables that you need if you have a core team of staff. And they are supported by a very clear treatment philosophy. And one of the best treatment philosophies we have for for instances of extreme violence in intellectual disabilities, positive behaviour support. And that's a philosophy that's still still evolving in some ways, but it is based at its best on applied behaviour analysis that within a within a human rights framework that looks at person centred practice, looks at improving quality of life, all those things that I think clinicians are trying to do at forensic hospital, and you've just mentioned the advances they're making. But what I think is especially helpful in my experience, you need somebody who is absolutely across every variable that I've just mentioned there, who is on the floor every day or nearly every day catching the staff doing it right and reinforcing their behaviour, shaping their behaviour and modelling and explaining the philosophy. You know, this is why we respond this way when Melanie says that. And this is why we don't use seclusion when she does this. If you have that, it's incredibly powerful because it's essentially, it's an apprentice master person model. Your core staff, and that's the people who have the one to one day in, day out, they're hugely important. If they get that support, they get highly effective modelling, they get immediate feedback and they get really good really quickly.
With that approach being taken now with Melanie and she's been transferred on to the sub acute ward with that team of staff around her, given her long term institutionalisation and her cognitive difficulties, this is going to be a gradual process, isn't it?
It is, yes.
Is there any way to know what that timeline looks like? Or is it just something that has to be worked out along the way, driven really by Melanie's response to it?
It's driven by Melanie's response to it. And when I say it, what I mean, just to unpack that a little, is appropriate treatments in the right environment at the required level. And it's that response that will give you behavioural data. And that's the evidence that you use for all decision making going forward.
But again, I expect that you would defer to the core team to make any progressive changes around what they're doing with Melanie based on what they see as being effective and Melanie's tolerance and ability to regulate herself in given situations.
Yes, yes, within the parameters of the treatment approach that I've just described.
Dr Manchester, I've read your report. And if I may say so, it seems very sensible. In the course of the report, you refer to five previous reports and you summarise them or quote from them. Why did it take so long to get to an approach that seems to be perfectly sensible?
It's it's a
It's a good question, isn't it?
It's a great question. And it's a question that I have never really understood the complete answer to. And I think if you were to speak to her treating clinicians, they have a similar, a similar, you know, view about it. What I would say in response to the question is it's the same question in response to the same behaviour.
I think we've lost Dr Manchester.
It looks that way, Chair. We will try to get that link back.
We were just getting to the critical point. We lost it.
Chair, we are texting Dr Manchester just to make sure that he's aware that the link has been broken.
Yes.
Chair, perhaps we may adjourn for five minutes and we should be good to go when we get back.
We'll adjourn for five minutes.
Thank you.
In the hope that we'll be good to go.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
Yes.
The Royal Commission is now resumed.
I'm sorry for the interruption, Dr Manchester, if you wouldn't mind resuming from where you left off.
Well, so I think what I was saying was that it's the same question in terms of why does it take so long to do what everybody agrees needs to be done? So, oh, a lot of people agree it needs to be done. It's the same question that I've been hearing for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years in response to the same behaviours, the same extreme behaviours and individual cognitive impairment. The answer, which we've just been talking a little bit about, which is that coordinated integrated care that understands applied behaviour analysis within a now within the evolving positive behaviour support framework. Why does it take so long? It seems to take so long because there is a lack of will at a high level of statutory services, and especially now in the year of NDIS, to to support the kind of funding and model that is most effective. So what what varies over those years I have noticed is the commitment of the true decision makers to do what their clinicians and patients and significant others are asking them to do, which is provide the right treatment in the right setting at the required intensity. And I'll give you, if I may, just an example of this. When I was with Aging Disability and Home Care, as I say, I was the practicing psychologist, I was in the Clinical Innovation and Governance Branch. And the colleagues within that branch prepared a high level report on exactly this question, what to do with people who have extreme behaviour, cognitive impairment and severe mental health disorders. It was an excellent report. It recommended a specially secure unit be developed by the state for people with cognitive impairment and severe mental disorders, where you could actually populate it with the kind of expertise that I've been talking about. And where you could do the kind of work that I've been talking about that would allow somebody to be transitioned out to less restrictive environments over time. To the best of my knowledge, that report proceeded nowhere because, of course, the political landscape changed. NDIS came in, there was a move to have the private sector step into this space. And, you know, there will be a range of opinion on the willingness of the private sector to work with clients who present the way Melanie does. So my own feeling is that the answer to your question is there has been variable motivation and commitment to do what most people who have experience in this area say needs to be done.
Is it fair to say that the report you prepared for Melanie is really, from your perspective, a template for how people in institutions like Melanie should be treated?
I think that is reasonable to say that there are so many commonalities across across the these individual presentations. And the dynamics are very similar at a systemic level, at a patient level, at a staff interpersonal level. But yes, I think there's so many commonalities that it's reasonable to say it's almost a template of the way forward.
And if we take a hypothetical of someone like Melanie coming into the system with her history as at nineteen ninety nine, that is, after the second offence in inverted commas that she had committed, how should such a person be dealt with now in New South Wales or for that matter in Australia?
I think, again, it goes to saying, well, what's what's the most appropriate treatment? And I think I've talked a little bit about what my my feeling is, as much as I'm within my area of expertise. And then it's, well, where can you provide that? And how do you provide that? And it's it's not in the system you have at the moment. Now, I think what you have at the forensic hospital, as you, as Janice has just described it to me. And this is my experience at the forensic hospital, if you have some exceptionally committed staff who are doing the very best they can in an inappropriate setting with inadequate resources.
But what do you do to overcome? What do you do to overcome?
I think you listen to your your staff and you go to the literature. And I talked about this a little while ago when somebody was asking me, well, how do you how do you skill up people? How do you build capacity in what is a very narrow area, a very extreme area of behaviour? And the evidence is there. If you go to the literature, the evidence is there. And one of the best ways you can do it is just get yourself in front of somebody who's done it. Ask them and follow them. And I think Emma Rudman talked about Doug Boa and his work in New Zealand in in a particular service that sounded to be doing excellent work. So I don't think it's, again, I don't think it's a difficult question or not not as difficult a question as you might imagine to answer what ought we to do. The difficulty is, how do we get people to do it once we've agreed what ought to be done? And as I say, even when you get to the level of, I forget entirely who was on the advisory panel for the report I just mentioned from Adam. But it was certainly a range of people with, you know, a great deal of expertise. So when you get to that level, preparing high high level reports for government and the executive saying here's what to do, and it goes nowhere. And I can understand why it went nowhere. The political scene changed. However, that's that's what I think you need to do. You need to question less about what is it we ought to be doing. It's more about, we know what we ought to be doing. How do we get there?
I think Commissioner Atkinson had a question.
I did. But can I just put it first in context? So we're talking about people who, if they don't receive appropriate treatment, are a danger to themselves and a danger to others. So we're not just talking, we're talking about the human rights of the person with intellectual disability and mental illness. We're also talking about the human rights of other people as well, aren't we?
Right.
So would it be fair to say that this is not about individual failings, this is a systems failing?
Yes.
And would it also be fair to say that as far as you can tell, Melanie's been subject to system failings her whole life?
I think it could have been done a lot better, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Dr Manchester, when you were talking about your ideal, you know, the change architecture, to use your words, you prefaced it with references to concepts like kindness and empathy. Are you suggesting that it doesn't take a particular skill set to be part of staff to support Melanie in the way that you've described? Or does it really take a particular skill set to be part of that team?
It does take a particular skill set and the person who has that skill set is important, though. So you can be a psychologist trained with a particular skill set, for example, cognitive behaviour therapy. But if you're a prickly individual, you're probably not going to help a lot of persons because they're going to react to your prickly personality. So when you're recruiting staff into this space, and as I say, this this one to one, the people who are doing the eight hour shifts, one to one, critically important team members, when you're recruiting into that space, I am less concerned with their degree at that point than I am with their ability to be kind, empathic and to have a flexible attributional style for why this person might be behaving the way that they do. Now, that's the foundation skill set that I want them to have. And I want them to have that because it's very difficult to teach that. It's very difficult to teach people to be kind. You know, when you ask patients who their favourite therapists are, and a lot of research has been done in this, one of the main words that patients will talk about, they'll use this word to describe their favourite therapist. And they will say they were warm. And they also say they listened to me. But they will say they're warm. Very difficult to teach somebody to be warm. Yet we've all been in a room with somebody who's cold. So I want a warm, empathic person to begin with who has a flexible attributional style. And that's the raw material that you then, and it's a very important raw material, that you then build the skill set on. And the skill set, you know, there's a lot of skills, but they are understanding how to do behavioural shaping would be one, how to downplay rather than get feeding or reinforcing appropriate behaviours. And I talk about in my report, motivation interviewing, I do a lot of work in motivation interviewing. And I like, that's a therapeutic style I wish I liked because it teaches you how to listen better to someone and not get into arguments with them. And but it's a difficult, it's a difficult, you have to be taught that skill, supported in it. So, yes, there's a range of skill sets and my colleagues will talk about additional ones too. And but to answer your question, you start off with those human human factors that are engaging.
Thank you. Yes. Miss Crawford, you're on again.
Thank you, Chair. Dr Manchester, you mentioned a unit for people with cognitive impairment. Is that because, would that be a smaller unit than the forensic hospital unit? Or do you have a vision for what that unit might look like?
I think it would be a smaller unit and it's quite a few years now since since that before it was prepared and they would have done an audit on who were the more extreme case studies or instances that they were hearing about that would require this. So I think it would be a fairly small unit. I couldn't, Janice, if you're asking me what would be the exact number, I really couldn't tell you that. And what else would I, would I say about that unit in terms of numbers? I think I would only add that it's it's not just for individuals who are in the forensic hospital. That there are, and as we know, the cognitive impairment is overrepresented in prisons. And people aren't in prison because of their cognitive impairment because they have memory problems. You don't go to prison because you have a memory problem. You go to prison because you have impaired executive functions. And what I mean by that is the executive functions are higher order skills. Melanie has gross impairments in executive functions. And those higher order skills are to do with planning, organising behaviour, novel problem solving and the main one, impulse control. When I worked, after I prepared the report for the Integrated Service Response, I went and worked for the Integrated Service Response for nine months before funding was wrapped up. And that that service was dissolved a few months ago. However, I was able to see that a lot of the behavioural difficulties, these extreme behaviours that you see in this small cohort of cognitively impaired individuals with these significant histories of trauma, there there is an expectation that they're supported in the community after they come out of prison, and it's wholly unrealistic. The community struggle, NGO struggle, wonderful providers working very hard, they're concerned, significant others struggle. And the type of service that I've described, I think that would be a wonderful service for individuals who were, if not in the forensic system, the prison system to exit into, to be given the chance for appropriate support, skill building and treatment and successful transitioning out.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr Manchester. Chair, I don't have any further questions for Dr Manchester.
Thank you very much. I'll just ask the commissioners again whether they have any further questions. Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions of Dr Manchester?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson.
No, I don't, Dr Manchester. I just wanted to note that you describe so many of the people that came before me for sentencing when I was a judge, that it's almost eerie how accurate it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to to come and discuss this.
No, thank you. Dr Manchester, thank you very much for your, I'm sorry, I'm I'm being reminded that I should ask whether any council appearing or any legal representatives appearing have any questions of Dr Manchester. I'm sorry, I'm I'm being reminded that I should ask whether any counsel appearing or any legal representatives appearing have any questions of Dr Manchester.
No, I don't. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
No, no, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Dr Manchester, thank you very much for your evidence, which has been very helpful. And thank you for the statement you have provided. And we have, of course, the report that you've prepared, which is part of the evidence of the Royal Commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye now.
Thank you. Miss Crawford, what should we do now?
Chair, I understand that Professor Ogloff is ready to go. So he is the last witness for the day.
Yes, well, we can proceed directly to Professor Ogloff. Do you wish to tender his statement?
I do. Thank you, Chair. Professor Ogloff's written statement is at tab three. And his CV is at tab four of tender bundle B one. And I seek to tender those documents into evidence and for them to be marked as exhibits eleven point eight point one and eleven point eight point two respectively.
Yes, thank you. That can be done.
There is an attachment to Professor Ogloff's statement at tab thirty two of tender bundle D one. And I ask to tender that document into evidence and for it to be marked as exhibit eleven point eight point three.
That also can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Professor Ogloff, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence, just to explain where everybody is, because it can be a little confusing. I take it, Miss Crawford, will it be you or Dr Meliphant that will be asking questions?
It will be me. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, okay. We have in our Brisbane hearing room Commissioner Mason, and we also have Miss Crawford of council, who will be asking you some questions very shortly. Commissioner Atkinson is joining the hearing remotely. Commissioner McEwen is in the same hearing room in Sydney with me. So that is where we are. I shall now ask you, please, to follow the instructions of my associate, who was in the Sydney hearing room, to take the affirmation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Ogloff. Now, Miss Crawford will ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Professor Ogloff, can you hear me and see me clearly?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Now, you provided a statement to the commission dated the eighth of February twenty twenty one.
That's correct.
Is there anything in that statement that you wish to amend or anything you want to add to it?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Now, Professor Ogloff, you're well credentialed in providing reports for forensic disability services and mental health services nationally and internationally.
Yes, that's correct.
And in, you were involved in two thousand and eighteen in authoring a report specifically looking at the Queensland Forensic Disability Service System.
That's true, yes.
And in Queensland, there is a forensic disability unit which is specifically designed for individuals with cognitive impairment and complex forensic needs, if I can put it that way.
Yes, that's true, who are on forensic orders.
Would you agree that a forensic disability service is a necessary type of facility for managing forensic disability patients with complex needs? Or can they, or should they be managed within forensic mental health facilities?
Well, I think that's a very difficult question to answer simply. The reality is that there's a difference in expertise between managing and supporting people with forensic disability versus those with forensic mental health. And I think one of the problems we faced in Australia traditionally was that people with disability in forensic systems were often caught up in the forensic mental health systems, uh, which were largely designed for people who have mental illness, which is generally remediable through medication, uh, rather than people who had expertise in disability. Uh, and obviously, the people with disability are often much smaller in number. So this led to a number of difficulties. And as a result, for example, in Queensland, there was a report referred to as the Carter Report from two thousand and six, where Justice Carter made recommendations about the need to identify specific expertise and develop services that meet the needs of people with forensic orders who are disabled. So, uh, the answer to the question is that people with forensic disability require services that are tailored to their specific needs. But that's a separate question from whether forensic disability services could be part of a larger forensic mental health system. Uh, and that could vary across jurisdictions. But the salient point is that whatever service system exists, it requires staff to have a level of expertise in assisting people with disability, not just mental health, because they're very different conditions.
I was going to ask you to explain to the commission what you think the differences are between the skills, for instance, that someone who has mental health professional qualifications uh, would be as to those who deal with patients with a cognitive disability in particular, and and what the difference is between those two skill sets?
Yes, I think in brief, uh, I could say traditionally, these overlap dramatically. So, for example, even at the beginning of my my life, my professional life in the early nineteen eighties, uh, it was still most often the case that there were large institutions and and these groups were combined. They may be on different units, but they were essentially managed by the same staff. Over the time, though, the reality is that we've we've understood probably much more about mental health and the remediation of symptoms in mental health. So we have seen, for example, in Australia uh, since that time, a deinstitutionalisation of mental health services, largely as a result of the advanced ability to manage people with mental illness in community largely by psychiatric medication. Uh, so the vast majority of people with mental health problems, even significant psychiatric disorders, are able to be treated effectively with medication and a range of other modalities. Of course, the difficulty with people who have disability uh, in the main, not all people, but the majority, certainly people with intellectual disability, for example, is that their condition, the disability condition, is not remediable. So it's a lifelong disability which they'll endure. So the efforts to work with people with disability is a very different focus than those with mental illness. It's largely on rehabilitation and also uh, a much more basic level of behavioural modification and behavioural support. So obviously, the majority of people with mental illness uh, do not have a disability, an intellectual disability or cognitive disability. So they're able to communicate, they have a executive functioning capacity that's at least average. And therefore, modalities such as cognitive behaviour therapy, for example, have have flourished over the last three decades uh, as an adjunct to medication. The difficulty with people with disability, uh, by definition, is they'll have uh, a level of dysfunction in self-management, often in care, inability to care for themselves. And they have limited capacity for decision making and executive functioning. So the the support and management and remediation of challenging behaviour, for example, requires a very different skill set among people who work with disability as compared to those who would work, say exclusively with people with mental illness.
All right.
Professor Ogloff, I'm sorry, I've I've been asked, actually, I think you did it, slow down a little in your presentation just after I was asked to ask you if you wouldn't mind just slowing down a little in your presentation. Thank you, because we have to translate through our Auslan interpreters and also for the real time transcript. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I will.
Professor Ogloff, with respect to restrictive practices, the case study that the commissioner currently examining, it's the case study of a woman by the student Melanie, who was held in a long term seclusion environment for a number of years. Can you comment on the use of seclusion with respect to patients with cognitive impairment? And what that might achieve by way of behavioural support, if anything?
Yes. So I think that most people would agree that seclusion has a place both in forensic disability and forensic mental health. But it should be extremely limited because what we know, given what I've already mentioned about limited capacity of people with disability, is that uh, their ability to abstract reason and to gain from restrictive practices is incredibly limited. And more often than not, people who are subject to ongoing or chronic restrictive practices, including seclusion, simply acquiesce or adapt to those. And the experience I've had is that rather than having a long term benefit in, for example, reducing challenging behaviour, it in fact often has a crippling effect, which can in fact exacerbate that that behaviour over time. I've seen this in in many cases. I've never seen Melanie, but I've seen many other people in in those circumstances.
And with respect to long term seclusion for patients or a patient with a cognitive impairment, being expected to earn their way out of seclusion by way of a traffic light system. Have you got experience of the traffic light system with respect to patients with a cognitive impairment?
I do. Sorry, you were going to ask some question. Yes.
I was going to ask you if that's a reasonable expectation that a patient with a cognitive impairment would be able to control their own behaviour to the extent required in order to meet the traffic light system and earn their way out? Do you have any comments to make about that?
Yes, again, traffic light systems can can be effective. They need to be, you know, again, because of the lack of ability for abstract reasoning, they need to be be very, very concrete, and any sort of expectations need to be within the capacity of the individual. So where these where these systems fail is when the expectations extend beyond the capacity of the individual. So just to give you an example, if if someone's expected to refrain from a particular behaviour for a period of time, then the period of time needs to be, at the beginning, very, very brief, so that the person can gain mastery over that behaviour. Uh, but sometimes what happens is people are put in situations where expectations exceed their ability. And very quickly, they 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 devolve into a learned helpedlessness. And the behaviour can sometimes actually exacerbate rather than remediate.
So they can become more aggressive rather than less aggressive in certain situations?
Yes, absolutely, more aggressive. I've seen this in a number of examples across the country in work I've done. Uh, it's it's, I think, counterintuitive to people. But the individuals in those circumstances, as a result of a variety of things, including, again, sometimes their historical experiences, experiences with trauma, the way they react to people in authority, uh, their own view of themselves, their own experiences. We can sometimes see these effects backfiring, and we can see people becoming deeper and deeper, sort of pushed into a rut. And often, when I work in those cases, we're looking for uh, some kind of circuit breaker to try to to try to change that cycle. Because for the individual in the midst of that, and often the staff who are there to support them, there is this collective learned helplessness.
And that would only exacerbate itself over time. The longer that that situation has been going on, the more helpless the staff and the patient would feel in that space.
That's correct. And I think sometimes in some cases I've seen the, for example, I have seen individuals who've been confined for, you know, extraordinary periods of time, sometimes years, you know, in in a room by themselves. Uh, and sometimes they become deteriorated to the point, for example, where they no longer wish to go outside. So if there are an opportunity to go outside, they 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 just decide not to. And, uh, sometimes when I have been able to speak to these people after those periods of time, they they can reflect that, for them, the pain of going back into the the sort of seclusion area was so great that they chose not to even leave it. And they feel like there's it's, there's no purpose in leaving. So so again, you you have, without a continuing um, movement towards trying to reduce the restriction through a variety of different means, the individual, uh, they may look like they're subdued, and it may appear that they're being managed in a way that's assisting, but it's certainly not assisting over the longer term. It's not helping towards a solution to restrict those practices.
And the the commission has heard that often the reason for the continuing seclusion for a long term period of time is because there is this tension between workplace health and safety issues with safety to staff and other patients. Rubbing against the individual rights of the patient who's detained in the seclusion area because they are perceived to be so dangerous.
That's absolutely correct.
So you talk about the circuit breaker. When you get to a point like that, is that when you need to bring in someone external or start doing things in a very different way with a core team, for example, to move things along?
I think this, the starting point, the short answer is yes. But the starting point is that it should it should as much as possible never get to that point. Because like all other behaviours for for people, once a behaviour becomes entrenched, it's all the more difficult to undo that. And so steps need to be taken right from the beginning to reduce the practices. And so in in facilities in which I, uh, you know, worked or reviewed, that's where we think, we see things start to become positive, where there's positive behavioural support or, uh, other other sorts of interventions right from the beginning. So to answer your question directly, once once people are in this entrenched uh, pattern, my experience is it's very, very difficult to change that. And particularly when we have limited opportunities for something truly different. So one of the points I I make in my statement is that because of our our state system in Australia, we have very limited facilities or capacity to manage people with particularly challenging behaviour. And so what happens in reality is it's a fixed group of staff uh, and an individual in a in the same sort of general setting, trying to do things differently. That that is not often an adequate circuit breaker. So a circuit breaker that I've seen, uh, would be a significant change in environment and and staff with them. That benefits the staff who often understandably can become fearful. They can become burnt out, and they can themselves become hopeless. So in a country, for example, like like the like the UK, um, they have an ability to move people because there's a national system uh, from one place to the next. And there's different levels, for example, of of security and safety. In our states, even in large states, we typically have one one sort of facility or sometimes no facility. So it becomes incredibly difficult to change, uh, the context and the mechanisms used to work with the person to an extent to effect change.
So are you suggesting that there should be a cooperation across state borders in order to facilitate some of those circuit breakers that you're talking about in in those most difficult cases?
I think both across states, but even in states. I mean, one of the one of the facts we see in in Australia is when an individual is in a in a high secure setting, whatever that is, could be prison, it could be a facility such as Queensland FDS, uh, it becomes very difficult to to step them down. And sometimes that actually could be very successful, but, uh, it becomes more and more difficult to do that. And one of the principles, again, of behaviour that we see is that when a individual client is in a circumstance such as such as we're described, and and one tries to begin to change behaviour, there's usually uh, an increase in the challenging behaviour before there's a reduction in it. So this this is very common, uh, principle of human behaviour, that when you're trying to change behaviour, sometimes the challenging behaviour actually increases before it'll start to to reduce. And a variety of reasons for that, but that's a principle that we often see. So if we translate that into what it means is that when we try to, for example, have some sort of circuit breaker for an individual, we might see an increase in challenging behaviour for a period of time. And usually what happens is the response is to put the person right back into the same environment, the same circumstance in which they found themselves. And as a result, And as a result, that further sets them back.
So that really brings in the issue of the staff skill and the ability to not get to that point in the first place. But when you are in that situation, how do you communicate with anyone else within the system in order to make things change? What needs to be done then?
Well, again, in my statement, I raise, I make a few observations and potential solutions. You've touched on staff training. I think that's a very important point is that, as I mentioned at the outset, the skill set is very different. So you could have similar education. So for example, a person could be trained as a clinical psychologist or a psychiatrist, have essentially the same university education, but over their professional experience, develop expertise in working with one population or the others. So often in my experience in disability and forensic disability, it's been very difficult to recruit staff who have a high level of expertise to work with a particular population, especially those who have challenging behavior. So I think the staff, staff training and experience certainly is one important aspect of that.
The multidisciplinary team approach as well is in your statement at paragraph eighty-seven, where you talk about that being important as the best way to run a forensic disability service. What does the multidisciplinary team look like for people who have a cognitive impairment and who might need that level of positive behavior support?
Yeah, so I talk about positive behavioral support. I know through other witness statements also, there's also neurobehavioral rehabilitation is often mentioned. And these modalities require individuals who comprise the team with different skills and abilities. So because the individuals who have challenging behavior doubtless have a host of problems, then you need members of the team who have different and complementary areas of expertise. So they operate variously, but typically they'll include someone who has medical expertise and a background typically in psychiatry, someone who has expertise in typically neuropsychology or less commonly neuropsychiatry, who understands the brain behavior interaction. You have to have some frontline clinical people. These will be people who could have various professional backgrounds, but have expertise in working with people with disability to understand how to work and what skill sets required. Then there are a host of so-called allied health staff, such as occupational therapists or rehabilitation therapists, to actually work with the individual as well. So it's really a combination of people with different skill sets who are able to work with individuals. In my experience, very often we'll see a dearth of those sort of people. Or if you do have someone who's particularly qualified, they'll have a much less hands-on opportunity with the individual. And then the day-to-day work is left to staff who are typically less experienced or less skilled. And obviously, they're the ones who are going to experience and face the greatest challenge.
Now, you talked in your statement about high staff turnover. Would you expect if you had a team with the relevant skill set involved, that the turnover would be reduced?
That's been the experience. And the experience on which I draw really comes from the development of forensic mental health services, which is, you know, my day-to-day work. So when I came to Australia, it was really to assist in the development of the Victorian statewide forensic mental health service. And at the beginning of the time, when I arrived, there were very few people across disciplines who had expertise in forensic mental health. And as a result, in the state, prior to the establishment of the Victorian Institute of Forensic Mental Health or Forensic Care, there was typically high staff turnover and it was seen as, you know, very unsatisfactory work. Over many years and development, that's ebbed and flowed. But the staff retention is often comparable to other areas of mental health. So that the area which is often seen as most challenging can still be a safe and satisfying workforce. So although it's a long process, it is the case that by changing the model in which people work and deliver services can assist in creating a more satisfactory employment setting. Because you touched on the fact that there certainly are occupational health and safety issues. And it is the case with many of people with these challenging behaviors, they have caused physical harm to others, including staff. So we mustn't underestimate how challenging it is, but it's meeting the needs of these individuals. And maybe I'll just close that bit by saying that this is why, one of the concerns I touch on early in the statement is that although I can't be definitive, it's likely the case around Australia that we have too many individuals in some of the higher secure sort of facilities and certainly in prison than we would really need to if we had service systems that were more tailored to the needs of the individual.
So in mental health, there are a range of facilities and a range of opportunities for care and treatment in the community, working through into acute services, medium secure, high secure, et cetera. Do you say that there is a similar need in the disability sector?
I think there is. I think that, you know, certainly both in mental health, but more in disability, I think there's less need for the institutions. I mean, we used to be very dependent on institutional care. We have thankfully moved away from that. But sometimes at the expense of the reality that there needs to be, you know, what we would call inpatient care for a small number of people. And that's, for example, my experience in all the states in which I've worked or done reviews is that, for example, if we use Queensland as an example, there's the small forensic disability service, which is, you know, high secure and actually purpose-built and from a physical structure, actually quite a good facility. But the difficulty is, as I mentioned earlier, it's almost impossible to transition people away from that facility. And so there's a lack of adequate step-down places. So in Queensland, I've seen, for example, people who are on forensic disability orders being managed in, for example, acute psychiatric units with patients who are acutely psychotic. When you have somebody who's, you know, got a cognitive impairment, lack of ability around executive functioning, and they're living with people who are acutely unwell. So while there's a justifiable focus on community, because of the small number of people with disability, I think we don't have an economy of scale to see the sort of graded care levels to which you refer.
When you spoke a moment ago about the difficulty in transition with patients from the forensic disability service in Queensland, is that limited to the time that you had spent doing your report with interest in that particular facility? Or do you have knowledge of that currently? Is that limited to two thousand and eighteen or is it current?
No, I think it's current. So I've had, my official role at the time was to do a review, which, you know, took a long time. Obviously, we started, we finished in two thousand and eighteen. I then had a role as an authorized officer under the Forensic Disability Act and did further work there. So, but even looking at the recent annual report and speaking to staff, they're having more success, but it's still a challenge in every single case. And that would be exactly the same in New South Wales, same in Victoria, same in our other states and territories.
And can you comment on how many patients across the country would be in similar circumstances to those within the Queensland Forensic Disability Service or Melanie's situation? What's the number? You said there's no economy of scale, but what is the number, do you know?
So sorry, if I could just start, the people with the most extreme challenging behavior like Melanie, thankfully, there are very few. So, I mean, most services will have one or two people who are in that category, but typically no more. The problem is we don't really know the number because, as I mentioned again in my statement, in forensic mental health, most people, although not in all states, but in most of the states, people who are either unfit to stand trial or not guilty by reason of mental illness or however it's referred to in the state legislation, they're now detained in forensic mental health facilities, such as the forensic hospital in Sydney or the Thomas Emling Hospital in Melbourne. With forensic disability, though, it's still very common for people to be detained in prison. So their behaviors are managed by a custodial approach, not a disability approach. So the difficulty is it's difficult to estimate the exact numbers. Because if we look at the number of people on the forensic orders, they'd be quite large. But then within that group, separating out who requires a custodial order versus a community order, and then again, within the custodial group, who can be managed in either custodial environments or hopefully better, less secure environments. So for example, in Victoria, the majority of people on forensic orders are managed either by, there's a statewide forensic disability service or still in prison. So the problem is the numbers are relatively small, especially as you look at the more challenging, the number gets smaller. So I think what happens is the services, including Queensland and New South Wales and elsewhere, they develop a way to manage the small number of people that I think we would uniformly agree would be not ideal. In fact, probably sometimes terrible. But because it's the only way they can get it to work, and by work, I mean reduce staff damage and save the welfare of the individual being detained, their physical safety, that we allow that to continue. So in the cases I've seen, it's not like people are happy and that they don't worry about this. It's just they can't see any way forward.
Do you have any particular solutions that might be able to be adopted?
Yes, and I should say some of the solutions have helped. And again, unfortunately, I'm less positive about people who are entrenched in these very difficult circumstances. Because as I mentioned earlier, the longer one is in the circumstance, the more difficult it is to change that behavior. But the experience in Queensland, just for example, has been, you know, there's still problems. Everybody would acknowledge it, but it has in fact improved fairly dramatically. So the forensic disability service in Queensland, for the first, I believe, five years of operation, could discharge no one. So it filled immediately and no one was transitioned. And it became stagnant, rehabilitation efforts were essentially dysfunctional. So there was a lot of work done internally to transition, to begin right from the beginning when someone's admitted, to begin the transition planning and to truly adopt the least restrictive environment approach. So the fairly straightforward principles are obviously a very comprehensive assessment to be very clear about the individual's deficits and their strengths and also the factors that contribute to challenging behavior. And then to establish on an individual basis something such as a positive behavioral support plan or neurobehavioral rehabilitation principles often combined to begin to address those needs in a preventative way. So one of the reasons we move people to secure environments is because within a secure environment, you can typically afford people a greater degree of liberty and that can assist them in developing behavior. So obviously, the assessment's the first component, then the tailored rehabilitation and always with the eye on transition and moving the person through. So this keeps the individual hopeful and the staff hopeful. So even if there are setbacks, which will be inevitable, the setbacks aren't seen as taking the person right back to square one, but rather a period of time where there needs to be a step back and then moving back forward. And certainly, as the FDS service has shown, the majority of people have transitioned through. And the ones who have transitioned, if they can find suitable accommodation, have generally done quite well. So it's having the, you know, very high level of expertise in assessing and intervening and then a sensible support system and transition system.
Professor Oglov, do you have the report that you prepared handy?
I don't have it. I have it electronically, but not in front of me. It's on my screen. I can refer to it.
I just wondered whether we might make some of your observations about numbers a little more specific by reference to your report and then you can tell us perhaps what's happened since. At page nineteen of that report, you say that in two thousand and seventeen in Queensland we're talking about,
Yes.
there were thirty-two new forensic orders disability. And that was an increase and there'd only been fourteen revoked since two thousand and eleven. The result as at one December two thousand and seventeen was that ninety-seven people were on forensic orders disability, eighty-six percent of whom were male and fourteen percent were female. What does that mean? Ninety-seven people were on forensic orders disability and you tell us that six people were detained to the FDS and further sixty-four with co-occurring mental illness and intellectual disability or cognitive impairment were managed by authorized mental health services. Now, can you just perhaps fill that in and explain what those figures mean?
Yes. So I think the confusion speaks to the complexity and difficulty of the system. So individuals who are in Queensland, and it's unique in the way that they call the orders. So they have a forensic order disability versus a forensic order, which essentially is mental health. And so, as I mentioned, there's a much larger population of people who have forensic orders mental health, but the smaller group has a forensic order disability. And to even complicate matters further, within that group of people, a number of them, not surprisingly, will have a co-occurring disability and mental health. So within the group of people who have a forensic order disability, as the report makes clear, it's really just a minority of them and in fact, six people who are in the FDS during the period. The rest of the people are managed around Queensland. And again, the system there is unusual because only when the individuals are in the forensic disability service, which is this small facility in Brisbane, are they managed by forensic disability. If they're managed outside of that service, then they're managed by the area mental health services around the state.
You've got a table that shows us where the people on forensic orders disability are located in Queensland, different places.
Exactly right.
But how are they dealt with? How are they treated? How are they managed? That's what I'm...
Well, that, oh yes. Well, that, again, that's the concern I have at the beginning is they are managed with people with psychiatric illness and they're managed at a level of security that's dependent on their behavior. And the problem is that, for example, in mental health services, the higher secure facilities are more acute. So but what that means is they're locked-inpatient facilities where people have, you know, acute psychiatric illness. And typically what that means is that they have delusions or hallucinations or very extreme mood disorders such as bipolar disorder or very serious depression. So you have an individual, sorry.
I was prompted to ask the question by your observation that Melanie's case was at the extreme end and that the number of cases like that was relatively small. I'm trying to get a feel for the ninety-seven cases that existed and that had forensic orders disability as at December two thousand and seventeen. I appreciate that only six were detained at the FDS, but the other ninety-one were also detained, weren't they, at different parts in Queensland, different parts of Queensland?
Yes, that's right. So I think, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So when I was asked the question, I really thought the question was around the people who require these high level of staffing in a secure environment. So the reality is that of that ninety-seven, quite a few are living in much less secure mental health facilities, including, for example, some I saw living in essentially cottages in, you know, a community which has people who are... which has people who are not acutely unwell, but are in mental health rehabilitation. And so they would have their own accommodation, they do their own laundry, these sorts of things. So the range is quite significant from the small number of people at the FDS requiring what I would call high secure containment to the larger number of people who still require accommodation, but who are able to be in much less restrictive environments. So just to give the chair and the others the comparison in a mental health system. So in a hospital such as the forensic hospital in Sydney or the Thomas Emily Hospital in Melbourne, there are a range of levels of security within the hospital. So you've got restricted units. So for example, the Thomas Emily Hospital has a very small seven-bed, highly restricted unit, which is a very high staff ratio for the people who require the highest level of security. And they do not have access to the broader hospital. They have access to the outside. There are courtyards within the unit. And then at the other extreme of the units at the Thomas Emily Hospital, there's a low-security unit which simply has a wire fence around it, and people live in their own accommodation. They do all their own cooking, they're cleaning, they go shopping. They do return to the facility, and they're locked there overnight. And then, of course, there would be people then moved to less secure community arrangements. And so the point I make is that the challenge around the country is in disability, we typically have a very small capacity for the most challenged and then almost no transition or very limited opportunities for appropriate transition.
Of the ninety-seven, your table tells us, for example, that there were fourteen of the West Morton network. I'm choosing that at random. What sort of security or conditions would those people have been held under? Do you know?
Yes, again, in each of the regions, they have, again, the differing levels of treatment. And this is, of course, the model of mental health around the country. So that West Morton would have an inpatient unit, and they would also have secure extended care units, and they would have, you know, less secure units. So the individual on a disability order would be placed in the unit that could best manage or contain their behavior. But of course, the difficulty is that their disability needs are not really being taken into account or addressed.
Now, I understand that, but it may be the case then that of the fourteen, some would have been in quite secure accommodation or detention, however you want to describe it.
That's correct. And again, Chair, that would be people in what we call in the inpatient, an inpatient unit, acute inpatient unit. And I don't have the numbers to hand, but of the ninety-seven, my experience is that would be a fairly small number. Probably a fifth to a third of them at any given time would require that. So in a state like Queensland, what that means is, you know, if we're starting to think about it, seven to ten people in high secure, such as the FDS, something like twenty to thirty people in a still secure but less secure environment. And then others would be even less secure. So again, in the forensic systems across the country, and really the best examples are Queensland, sorry, Victoria, New South Wales, these gradations of security and care are in one large hospital, which has, you know, for example, swimming pools, physical, you know, at Thomas Emily Hospital, there's a tape, there's kiosks. So there's some individuals there, they're not locked at all in their rooms, and they have access in twenty-four hours in the perimeter of the hospital. So in disability, again, we unfortunately don't have that. So we see this misfit between trying to meet the needs of the individual alongside people for whom the services have been built who have very different needs.
All right. In that report, also, page nineteen, you say there were a further sixty-four beyond the ninety-seven who had both a mental illness and an intellectual disability or cognitive impairment. And they were managed by the authorized mental health services on a forensic order, mental health. That means, as I follow it, that some of those people, although they had a mental health issue, also had a cognitive disability. What does it mean that they were managed by authorized mental health services? How were they managed?
Yeah. So the way it works in Queensland, and it's similar in New South Wales, is if an individual has a co-occurring mental illness and disability, then they are managed like anybody else with a mental illness. So they would be in similar facilities, as we've just talked about, to remediate the mental health symptoms, but at the same time, they'll have disability. So it's from a disability perspective, they're not dissimilar. It's just that that group of people would have, in addition, say, to an intellectual disability, maybe a disorder like schizophrenia.
And would some of those be held in secure facilities as well?
They certainly are, but they would be secured mental health. And certainly, you know, that would be the case in the forensic hospital in Melbourne or Sydney. So that's exactly right.
I'm not implying any criticism. I'm just trying to get a feel for what kind of numbers we're talking about. And the numbers from what you're describing now, although they may appear relatively small in absolute terms, are not insignificant numbers of people subject to, people with cognitive disability, subject to, in some cases, high levels of security.
You're exactly correct. And that's the, again, in the report, they're the recommendations we make. I mean, the problem that we saw is that the authority of the director of forensic disability is limited. And there was an example from a mental health review tribunal case that I used as a quotation, that shows that this, you have a director who has expertise in disability, but only has control really over the clients of the disability service. So that when the individuals are not in that service, and of course, the vast majority aren't, then they're managed by mental health services, where the individual clinicians may or may not have that expertise. And similarly, the mental health review tribunal who deals with them, as we've identified, similarly struggle to understand disability. What you certainly appreciate in your commission is the the fact that there's a range of people with disability, some of whom can be very, very complex, but their needs are very different from people with mental illness. And I think what I'm trying to demonstrate in a less than articulate way is that those with forensic disability orders are at significant disadvantage in Australia compared to people with forensic mental health orders for whom there is a much broader array of services. But also, the services are purpose-built and designed and targeted at their needs. Whereas those on disability orders are typically moved into the mental health services to contain them, that is, to meet their security needs. But the extent to which they're meeting their rehabilitation and disability needs would be, I think, woeful.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So Professor Oglov, the numbers at the FDS-type secure facility requirement are quite small. But if I've understood the conversation and the questioning by the chair and the answers that you've given, it would seem that the data that's available is quite difficult to drill down into, to tease out where those needs really are for people with cognitive disability with direct numbers that can support that type of inquiry.
Yeah, there is across the country, but in the main, that's true. And, I mean, it was very difficult to get the data we got. I mean, we were very fortunate to have, you know, a period of time to do that, but they weren't available very easily. And similarly, the, you know, excellent question the chair asked about, you know, say, West Morton, we had no way to know, even on a snapshot, where exactly people were within West Morton. So we knew they're within this area mental health service, which has a very large catchment area and a large number of patients, but we wouldn't know within the service exactly where they were. So I guess the point is, for, you know, moving forward, there would need to be considerable effort around identifying the numbers as step one in planning.
And with the issue of transitioning out of those longer-term facilities, when a patient perhaps is ready for a change to a step-down facility or some other type of accommodation, has that been complicated by the NDIS?
I'm afraid it has. The experiences, I think, you know, across the country have been that, potentially not surprisingly, people who are more challenging and more difficult to manage, that's been, it's been much more difficult for them to find a suitable accommodation. And I think, you know, that's certainly understandable. The act, the NDIS act, makes reference to a provider of last resort, typically being the state. And the fact is that there has been some effort in some states to establish forensic disability services through the NDIS, but that's been very difficult. And I must say, I'm not across the intricacies, but I know some of the issues which we did canvass at the time of the Queensland review, and I've seen subsequently, is that the NDIS now will question what services they should provide. And obviously, they see themselves understandably as providing disability services, but monitoring and what we would call forensic services are things that they might not think that they should provide under their remit. So there's a question of, you know, where does responsibility fall for the care for the individual? Because obviously, the individuals who we're talking about have a mixture of disability issues, but also other forensic issues. And by forensic, I mean issues that contribute to challenging behavior and offending, which would extend beyond mere disability.
Thank you. I have nothing further. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I shall ask Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions of Professor Oglov?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Atkins?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner McKeown?
No, thank you.
Professor Oglov, this is perhaps might be regarded as a thought bubble, but Dr. Manchester commented earlier this afternoon, I don't know whether you were observing his evidence, that the difficulty with the NDIS in terms of people of the kind that we are talking about, who are to transition or hopefully to transition into the community, is that the NDIS uses a private provider model, and private providers are not well-adapted to dealing with the extraordinarily complex and difficult issues that you and he have described, and indeed, others have described. I'm wondering whether a possible approach to that kind of issue is for NDIS funds to be used in a rather different way for people of the kind we're talking about to transition into the broader community. And that is, perhaps, for them, whatever the position for others might be, to carve out a separate model so that any funds that are available are actually directed in an appropriate way to their particular situation.
I think that's, you know, an excellent idea. And again, if we just draw a parallel to the forensic mental health services, although there's obviously a Commonwealth Medicare model, people in forensic mental health are not funded through that model, but they're still funded. So in a secure hospital, such as I've mentioned, and in the transition from that, all of the care of the individual is paid for and responsible by the public funding, not just treating mental health. So for example, in the Thomas Emily Hospital, you know, people are not dissimilar from people with disability. They have a mental illness, but they would also have a host of other problems, substance abuse, potential personality problems, anger management, a range of things, which are not strictly speaking mental health. But no one ever tries to separate out, well, what is mental health responsible for versus some other entity? Instead, the individuals treated collectively. And I think in the NDIS, similarly, if in the transition the range of needs the individual have are identified, and those funds are used to fund that, rather than trying to tease out, like the examples I had, and again, this is in different cases, is sometimes you'd have an individual who would be on a very large package prior to the NDIS, and by large, I mean in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, who would then get an allotment in the, say, $35,000, because that was the amount seen to manage their disability or to provide disability support. So it's, you know, it sort of goes back to the principle of assessment. Identify the range of needs the person has and meet the needs. Because particularly people on forensic orders, from a legal perspective, they're being detained on those orders or managed on orders, not just because of their particular disability, but because of the ongoing risk they pose to society. So there's an obligation to provide them with mechanisms to reduce that level of risk and ultimately come off those orders.
Thank you very much. Does any, do any council or representatives wish to ask Professor Oglov any question?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
In that case, thank you very much, Professor Oglov, for coming to give evidence and for the report, the statement you provided, and also the documents that are attached to that statement. We're grateful for your assistance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Yes, shall we adjourn until nine thirty AM Queensland time, ten thirty New South Wales and Victoria and Tasmania, and no doubt offshore islands time?
Thank you, Chair.
Very good. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.